Come to Richmond Public Schools School Board Meeting. The meeting this evening takes place at 6:02 PM, Monday, July 19th, 2021. Madam Clerk, please read the electronic statement followed by the roll call. Thank you.
This meeting is being held as an electronic meeting pursuant to and in compliance with Richmond City Council's Ordinance 2020-093, adopted April 9th, 2020, and extended by Ordinance Number 2020-183, adopted August 20th, 2020, and by Ordinance Number 2020-232, adopted December 14th, 2020, and the school board's resolution approved on April 20th, 2020. Simultaneous translation is being provided tonight in Spanish via Zoom, and the meeting notice contained information on how individuals needing translation services could obtain the service. The meeting notice also stated that the meeting would be a virtual meeting and would be livestreamed for the public on the school division's Facebook page, and the link was provided. The meeting notice indicated that the board would not receive public comments in person. However, public comments could be submitted to the school board clerk and the email address comments and the email address for comments was provided. The agenda of the meeting was posted to board docs. Roll call. District One, Elizabeth Dorr.
Here.
District Two, Mariah White.
Present.
District Three, Kenya Gibson.
Here.
District Four, Jonathan Young.
Present.
District Five, Stephanie Rizzi. Ms. Rizzi. District Six, Dr. Shonda Harris Mohammed.
Present.
District Seven, Cheryl Burke.
Here.
District Eight, Dawn Page.
She's on her way.
District Nine, Nicole Jones.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, we have seven members present currently. We do have a quorum.
Thank you so very much. Mrs. Clerk, we'll move forward with our agenda at this time. 1.02, adoption of the agenda. May we have a motion at this time? Mr. Young, is there anything to be shared?
Yes, ma'am. But first, I see one of our colleagues, I may not have heard it on my end, but I believe one of our colleagues missed roll call but is here. Or was that just? Ms. Rizzi.
Ms. Rizzi? Thank you.
It may have just.
Ms. Rizzi?
She's here, but you can't, her, her sound is not, she's speaking, but we cannot hear her.
Okay, she's on mute.
She is here.
Thank you so very much.
And Madam Chair, correct, I see Ms. Gibson.
Okay, to speak? Regarding the agenda?
Correct, correct, yes.
Ms. Gibson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to amend the agenda to move items 6.01 and 8.2 to follow public comment in that order.
All right, 6.01, which is George With, and to move that to after number two, move that to number three? Is that what you're suggesting? Yes?
Yes.
All right. Would you like to make that a motion?
Yes, I motion to amend the agenda to move items 6.01 and 8.02 to follow public comment in that order.
8.02. Question for you. Rather than just moving 8.2 and spitting it up, so, which would be other informational items, usually we don't read those items, okay. We don't usually discuss that unless a question comes up. All right. Is there a second to that motion of Mrs. Gibson's?
Madam Chair, I see Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Dr. Harris Mohammed, the floor is yours.
I second the motion.
Is there any discussion, questions?
This happens on his laptop, but we just see if I can hear you.
We can hear you now, Ms. Rizzi. Is there any discussion regarding the motion made by Ms. Gibson and seconded by Dr. Harris Mohammed? Any discussion? Mr. Young?
Not as of yet, Madam Chair. No, ma'am.
There is no discussion. We are ready to vote? Madam Clerk, we're moving, the motion is that we move 6.01 to, it will be the number three on the agenda, and 8.02 will be moved up as well under as number three. Being mindful that they both are board business and other informational items. All right, very good. Mrs. Clerk, we're ready for the roll call regarding this. All right, Ms.
District One, Elizabeth Dorr.
No.
District Two, Mariah White.
Yes.
District Three, Kenery Gibson.
Yes.
District Four, Jonathan Young.
Aye.
District Five, Stephanie Rizzi.
Madam, Madam Chair, I saw a note arrive that Ms. Rizzi is now unable to hear us, so we can hear her.
Okay, she changed computers, I believe. Can you text her and, not text, excuse me, put in the chat and ask her her preference in voting? She doesn't know we're voting on her, does she?
She, she, she doesn't. Let me send a note now.
Thank you. Continue, Madam Clerk.
District Six, Dr. Shonda Harris Mohammed.
Yes.
District Seven, Cheryl Burke.
No.
District Eight, Dawn Page.
abstain.
Abstain, okay. District Nine, Nicole Jones.
No.
Should we wait for Ms. Rizzi's vote, Madam Chair?
You can give her another minute, otherwise the yes will have it. If she doesn't, let's give her a chance to answer in, in the chat. Mr. Young sent her something in the chat.
Madam Chair, I did, but it was unable to go through. She actually sent me a note that she is logging out and logging back in.
All right. Go ahead and proceed.
Oh, actually, I see she just joined.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I apologize. I'm voting abstain because I'm just logging in.
Thank you, and we've noted, so noted on the minutes, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
That Ms. Page has joined us.
Okay.
All right, so right now we have.
Right now, we have a vote of four yes, three no, and one abstention. Ms. Rizzi's vote has not been included.
All right, so the motion is taken. There, very good. So it's been moved up as listed. All right, next item is number two, public information. 2.01, who's reading tonight and who's keeping time?
I'm going to read.
And I will be keeping time.
Thank you, Ms. Lilly. Please proceed.
Ronald Hansborough, we want and need a new school. Caitlin Pierce and Mary Cosette, who submitted identical comments. It has been one year since RPS administration committed to a 90-day review of SRO policy in RPS. Since the launch of that review period, administration held no public hearings and put forward no recommendations on our district's standing memorandum of understanding with the Richmond Police Department. This fall. I just hear. This fall, RPS will return to in-person learning. When our students come back, they should be met with safe, supportive learning environments where they do not face criminalization. In 2015, the Center for Public Integrity revealed that Virginia led the nation in in-school referrals to law enforcement. Those referrals disproportionately targeted students of color and students with disabilities. In Richmond, SRO allocation in RPS schools follows the same pattern. Our SROs are assigned to schools whose Black and Latinx student populations exceed district averages. The same is true for students with disabilities and students facing economic hardship. There can be no question, in Richmond, school policing is discriminatory and it sets students up for failure. There is reason to be hopeful. In the last two years, Virginia has joined a global movement to remove police from our public schools. Last year, during a national uprising in opposition to police violence, the city of Charlottesville made the choice to end its MOU with Charlottesville Police. The city of Alexandria voted in May of this year to end the funding lines for school resource officers, and the city of Arlington is taking steps in the same direction after its superintendent publicly supported an end to school policing. Richmond must join the movement to end criminalization of our youth through in-school policing. We have seen successful proposals and implementation in cities like Oakland, Toronto, and Charlottesville. The most successful models replace school police with specialized staffing from the communities our schools serve, increasing the trauma-informed care practitioners in our schools. Rethinking our approach to staffing has tremendous potential in Richmond, where understaffing and hasty consolidation has led to needlessly risky conditions in our schools. We ask the RPS School Board to take the following steps to ensure the safety of all our students. One, set a definitive date to end RPS's MOU with the Richmond Police Department, after which the MOU will be nonrenewable. Two, establish a deadline to transition private security officers out of RPS buildings, limiting their role to securing school grounds and restricting their interaction with students. Three, commit to one-to-one replacement of all SROs and SSOs who are currently staffed inside of RPS buildings with unarmed community source safety monitors formally trained in conflict de-escalation and restorative justice. I think I meant four. Four, staff one full-time restorative practitioner and one additional full-time mental health professional at each RPS school where students with IEPs or English language learners exceed district average. Ensure these professionals are bilingual at all schools where English language learners exceed district average. These steps are designed to ensure school safety while also increasing support staff and socio-emotional supports for students most likely to be targeted by disciplinary systems. School policing treats school safety as a zero-sum game, where the security of some students is accomplished at tremendous expense to others. Our students deserve better. We believe the steps above will create space for community engagement, community-led security measures, and a significant reduction in, in, in on-campus referrals to law enforcement. Sydney Suarez, I am in full support of removing SROs from Richmond Public Schools. Lakshmi Menon, I am reaching out to show support for removing SROs from Richmond's school system. Here is why. Police are not necessary to keep the students safe. In fact, it is statistically proven to be harmful for African-American children. While there are some studies that suggest SROs decrease crime in schools, a greater number of well-designed studies suggest officers increased negative outcomes for kids, including increasing the number of drug and weapon-related offenses and exclusionary disciplinary actions. And then there's a citation. This means far greater numbers of kids than necessary being exposed to the justice system. Youth of color are far more likely to be arrested at school. In Richmond, during the 2019-20 school year, Black students made up 62.9% of the total student population, but over 85% of arrests in school. White students represent 14.2% of the total student population, but made up less than 10% of arrests, and this data is from the Department of Juvenile Justice 2019-20 for Richmond, analyzed by the Legal Aid Justice Center. It doesn't have to be this way. With more spending on counselors, social workers, and restorative justice programs, and with intentional and authentic engagement with community members, parents, and students, our schools can become safe, positive places of learning where all students can thrive. Restorative justice is a theory of justice that emphasizes seeking to repair rather than to punish when there is harm, using practices that A, bring understanding to how harm took place and its root causes and impacts; B, include those involved and affected by the harm; C, seek to support the growth, excuse me, seek to support the needs of all involved; and D, center values of growth, safety, empathy, shared power, choice, and healing; and E, build mutual responsibility and constructive responses to conflict.
Time.
Rosalynn Gibson, I am writing to ask the RPS School Board members to work with the city of Richmond to ensure that RPS stays on track with rebuilding a new George With High School by 2024. I listened to the last school board meeting in June 2021. During the last school board meeting, the school board decided to meet with Mayor Stony and Richmond City Council to discuss a compromise. Prior to the 6/28 meeting, five school board members who voted to take back school construction from the city have said very little about the concerns of the community, students, faculty, and staff regarding George With High School's unsafe conditions. What about the children and staff who have to attend George With High School under the dilapidated, crumbling structure? Also, why aren't some of you concerned about the poor working conditions of your fellow RPS school teachers and principals? During the 6/28 meeting, school board member Mariah White stated that the school board member Dawn Page was playing the race card. Ms. White, the race card is the card that RPS has been dealt. I recommend that you read the article posted by Pandemic Pass or Fail, titled Anti-Racist Coalition: The Movement to Integrate Public Schools Across the Country. The article discusses RPS Mary Mumford Elementary School demographics that do not reflect the rest of Richmond's student body. 63% of students in RPS as a whole are Black, yet at Mary Mumford, 75% of the students are white. Also, the article states under the subtitle, "Report Finds Increasing Segregation." Quote, "In 2016, Congress's watchdog agency, the U.S. Government Accountability Office, conducted an investigation. The agency found more than 60 years after the Supreme Court's historic Brown versus Board of Education decision that ruled racial segregation in public schools was unconstitutional. Americans' public schools are..." Reagan Victoria Young, I have three children in my household who have all attended Richmond Public Schools. I feel strongly that police should not be in children's learning institutions for these 12 reasons, which are all from this fact sheet on the topic presented by the Institute for Policy Studies. Bring these points up in your next meeting. 12 Facts About School Police and the School-to-Prison Pipeline. One, a 2019 report shows that since the Parkland, Florida and Santa Fe, Texas shootings, states have allocated an additional $965 million to law enforcement and schools. Two, according to the 2019 ACLU report, cops and no counselors, 1.7 million students are in schools with cops but no counselors. 3 million students attend schools with cops but no nurses. 6 million students attend schools with cops but no school psychologists. And 10 million students are in schools with cops but no social workers. Three, out of 2.6 million total out-of-school suspensions in the 2015-16 school year, 40.6% were Black students and 31.7% were white students. Within the public school system, Black students make up 15.4%, and white students make up 48.9%. Thus, despite making up a much smaller proportion of the public school student population, Black students are four times more likely to be suspended and three and a half more times likely to be arrested in school than their white peers. Four, schools employing school police see increases in reported student offenses and school-based arrests by as much as 400%, according to a 2009 study. Five, researchers have found few differences between Black and white youth regarding common areas of arrest. They are roughly as likely to... Kelly Meyerland, hello, I am in support of removing police from Richmond schools and instead using the money to truly support school students holistically, mind, body, soul. And as the Legal Aid Justice Center posted about, to provide students with competent counselors, restorative justice practitioners, behavior interventionists, and other support staff. Thalia Hernandez, my name is Thalia Hernandez and I'm a resident of the 5th District. It's time to stop criminalizing our youth by ending police presence in schools, including SROs. Schools should be a place where all students are safe and are able to learn. Any accountability can be handled outside of the criminal justice system. Our courts, jails, prisons, and police forces can forever negatively impact a young person's life, including their future career, college access, and connection with their friends, family members, and communities. Stability and community connections are what kids need, not criminal punishment and surveillance. If we want to address any issues in schools, we can use nonviolent interventions that are also preventative and reactive, including counselors, trained unarmed behavior interventionists, school aides, restorative justice practitioners, and other support staff. SROs do not make schools safer. In fact, SRO incidents against students make them less safe, especially Black-owned youth. Discipline is not a criminal issue, and involving police in disciplinary issues is not appropriate and is actively harmful to youth of color. Police vote to end the agreement with RPD and end SROs and police presence in schools to ensure that students perceive help and care, not harm. Our funding should go to ensuring students are thriving in and out of the classroom. This is one piece of a larger investment in communities and resources that must take place. Thank you for taking action on this necessary issue. Carly Tony, as a Richmond citizen, public school advocate, and school counselor in training, I respectfully ask the school board to remove school resource officers from Richmond Public Schools. School resource officers contribute to the school-to-prison pipeline, which disproportionately affects our Black and Brown students and students with disabilities. Richmond can do better for our students by hiring more behavior interventionists, counselors, and other support staff. Please protect our students. Rebecca Koska, as a healthcare provider, I have seen the long-term impact that policing in schools can have on children. Please review the facts below and consider removing police from our schools and using these funds to increase services that improve children's lives, like social workers and mental health professionals. Schools employing school police see increases in reported student offenses and school-based arrests by as much as 400%, according to a 2009 study. Researchers have found few differences between Black and white youth regarding common areas of arrest. They are roughly as likely to get into fights, carry weapons, steal property, use and sell controlled substances, and skip school. Data from 2016 shows that despite these behavioral similarities, Black teenagers were 2.3 times more likely than white teenagers to be arrested for all delinquent offenses. As of 2018, Black students were three times more likely than non-Black students to attend a school with more security staff than mental health personnel. According to the ACLU in 2019, North Carolina, Iowa, and Michigan, Black girls were more than eight times as likely to be arrested than white girls. According to the same study, Black girls are arrested at four times the rate of white girls nationally. Brian Bills, I would like to submit the following public comment for the July 19th school board meeting. As a former high school teacher, I am disappointed by the conduct of the school board over the past few months. With lots of urgent topics facing the school district, the board has chosen to create additional work by taking over the process of building schools. I am deeply skeptical that a school system has or should try to create the expertise needed to manage large capital projects, which often run over budget and behind schedule. Unless RPS plans to build multiple schools every year, this seems like an inefficient use of time and resources. Whatever your intentions, I can only tell you that from the outside, it looks like some type of weird power play or ego trip. The secret middle-of-the-night vote is also inexplicable to me, given the board's alleged desire to have community engagement. I also don't understand how this is the top priority for the school board right now, instead of figuring out the RPS curriculum, the transition to year-round school that starts in 11 months, how to address learning gaps from COVID, or a host of other valuable matters. I ask that the board quickly come to a compromise with the city that allows George With to be rebuilt on schedule, and then refocus your time on real priorities for our kids and our community. Tajan Minor, good evening to all. The Richmond branch NAACP stands by all the previous RVA Branch, NAACP press releases. Build schools now without delay, and we also feel the city and RPS should be working hand-in-hand to build schools. Get rid of the egos and personalities and do what's right for our children. Do the right thing and come to the table. You have no plan, and the city does. We support Eldor's resolution. Robin D. Mines, I am a 5th District resident and a 1976 George With graduate, Air Force veteran, Swansboro West Civic Association president, pastor, and community leader. I am in full support of the resolution proposed by Representative Liz Dorr to come to the table with the mayor and city council on a compromise to build George With High School as soon as possible, preferably by 2024. There is no reason other than personal ill will toward the mayor that would hinder a compromise. We, the citizens of Richmond, ask that all involved be true leaders and put personal feelings aside in order to do what is right for our children and community. Please stop comparing us to Henrico and Chesterfield. We are tired of being treated like second-class citizens. We urge you to focus on serving your entire district and city and not just your special interest groups. Let's stop with the excuses, stop casting shade, pondering over past mistakes. Let's learn, grow, and proceed to get the job done. #WithCan'tWait. Amelia Lightner, my name is Amelia Lightner, President of the Upper Reservoir District Community. I am a resident of the 8th District. I am asking that you partner with the city's RFP for the design of the new George With High School on tonight's agenda. Please support Representative Elizabeth Dorr's resolution. My children and their children graduated from George With. I truly believe we should care enough to give our children the very best. Thank you for your support. Keith and Jamie Weinstein, please work with the city in issuing the RFP for George With High School. Mary Hicks, my name is Mary Hicks. I am a former graduate of George With High School, and I have been a resident of the 5th District. I am writing tonight to ask that you partner with the city and join the city's RFP for the design of the new George With High School. This approach allows the board to still oversee construction while still enabling the fastest possible opening of a new George With. On tonight's school board agenda, Representative Dorr has put forth a motion that enables RPS to partner with the city for procurement. We ask that you please vote in favor of this motion. This is important to me because I have relatives that are students of George With High School, and I have seen for myself the sad state of disrepair the school is currently in. The school looks worse than it did when I was a student there. There are major cracks in the floor and the windows, and heating vents are patched up. I believe our students deserve the best facility possible to learn. There is no time to waste. With cannot wait. Thank you. Deborah Raden Booth, my name is Deborah Raden Booth and a community member of the 5th District. I am writing to request that you partner with the city for the design of the new George With High School. This will be the most efficient way to start the completion of the new school. Representative Dorr has put forth a motion that enables the city to partner with RPS for procurement. I am asking that you vote in favor of this motion. This is important to me because the students in this area deserve the best that can be offered. I am, again, a member of this community, and I thank you for your service. God bless you all. Mark Person, my name is Mark Person. I am a George With High School graduate, class of 1974, and a local community member. I am a resident of the 4th District of the city of Richmond. I am writing tonight to ask that you partner with the city and join the city's RFP for the design of the new George With High School. This approach allows the board to still oversee construction while still enabling the fastest possible opening of a new George With High School. On tonight's school board agenda, Representative Dorr has put forth a motion that enables RPS to partner with the city for procurement. We ask that you please vote in favor of this motion. I am a lifetime city resident, and my relatives have been RPS graduates since the 1930s during the Great Depression. They were all contributing members of the Richmond community and worked and paid taxes to support the local economy. Some became teachers, and education was and is of great importance in my family. I played sports and never missed a day of high school and was fortunate to continue my education on an academic scholarship at Randolph-Macon College where I graduated in 1978. I recently retired from the Internal Revenue Service, where, as a federal employee, it was an honor to serve the public. where, as a federal employee, it was an honor to serve the public. Giving back has always been a priority and making it better for the generations ahead. I feel we strongly need a new George With now, as the school has seen its better days. The school has deteriorating infrastructure, and when the school was built back in the late 1950s, there was no need for wiring for technology, as is needed today. I have helped out as an alumni and as a member of the George With Booster Club, where we have supported the students in athletic programs. I was also on the inaugural Athletics Hall of Fame Committee, which honors great student athletes of the past. I am always energized when meeting the students and devoted teachers that dedicate their time in educating the future leaders of tomorrow.
Hi.
Julie Joyner. Thank you for hosting a community meeting for George With last week. I listened to residents expressing their pain and anger and their desperation. It's very difficult to sit on the stage, listen without personalizing, and recognize that their pain is not about you. It's about a position you each chose, and you can also choose to really hear the words, quote, "We can't continue to wait for a new school," end quote. School board members are in the position to right the wrongs, not just for George With, but also the many other schools that need replacement. I believe you are all passionate about RPS, and I urge you to act quickly and collaboratively to build George With and to show our students that great leaders compromise and create solutions. Compromise and collaboration are strengths and only create more opportunities for our students. Please demonstrate your leadership and commitment by working together instead of holding the line. Find a way to use your skills, expertise, and talents to improve the learning environment for George With students while developing a plan for future school construction. Both and, you can do both and more. Thank you. Emily Kavanaugh. I am asking Mr. Camaras or another member of the administration to please discuss in detail during the Agenda Item 4.01, 2021 reopening discussion, the recent Broad Rock Elementary School closure of several days due to COVID exposure, and if we may see similar closures for fall 2021. Why was the entire school closed? Were lunch or recess at this location not separated by class or grade level? Of course, safety is my number-one priority and yours as well. We all know positive COVID exposures and tests will happen. What impact will that have on the particular classroom and the school at large? Thank you for addressing these at tonight's meeting. Tisha Erby. Hello, all RPS board members and RPS staff. My name is Tisha Erby. I'm a mother of five boys, four of whom are RPS students, and I'm a graduate of George With High School class of 2007 and a resident of the eighth district. I'm writing today to once again ask you to please, please compromise with the city in the building of a new George With. I attended the last week's public meeting at With and spoke alongside with my two older children, who will be attending With in 2022 and 2023 school year, along with my husband, also a With graduate class of 2006. Not one person who spoke at that meeting agrees with you that now is the time for schools to build schools, and it's worth delaying a new George With High School in order for that to happen. Please listen to and represent your community. This past week, four of my children have been attending RPS summer school. They have been back in the buildings, which was wonderful at first. However, there was a case of COVID at Broad Rock Elementary, where two of my younger kids are attending last week. This case has shut down summer school, as well as the City Parks and Rec FIBA summer camp, until at least Thursday. I am concerned that in bringing in this construction conversation forward, you all are distracting the administration from being able to focus on what is most important right now: getting our kids back to school safely and making up for the learning loss caused by the pandemic year. Please put our kids first. Please give the RPS administration the ability to be successful. Please stop focusing on these petty arguments. The lives of our kids, both now and in the future, depend on it. From your proud RPS family. Oh, and by the way, #WithCan'tWait, #FallReopenWait. Fad Williamson. I am a fifth district resident and RPS parent. I am writing in support of Liz Dorr's motion to have RPS join the city of Richmond's RFP for the George With High School project. It's time to move the With project forward, and it's past time for the board to focus its full attention on education and supporting our kids who have experienced myriad traumas over the course of the pandemic. Your priority should be supporting our kids right now, not building the school's construction division as soon as possible. The amount of time the administration and the board have already spent on the With issue amounts to governance malpractice. Last week at George With High School, the community spoke clearly and powerfully. My hope and expectation is tonight, this board shows it was listening. It's time to move forward and move on. Teresa Kennedy. My name is Teresa Kennedy. I am an RPS parent and a resident of the third district. I am writing tonight to express my disappointment with both my school board representative and the four representatives voting in a block with her regarding school construction. I am disappointed because my representative regularly speaks out on the need for transparency in our democratic process, yet she violated Virginia Open Meeting and Freedom of Information Act law when she presented the school construction motion to everyone on this board without making it publicly available via the meeting agenda documents. I am disappointed that she and her supporters claim that bringing school construction back within RPS accountability will put it in the hands of more democratically elected officials when both the city and, excuse me, when both the mayor and city council members are all democratically elected, and it's clear this faction does not have the support of the mayor or city council on this matter. I am disappointed that my representative has not seemingly considered the facts that RPS is under an MOU and that no school district has ever built a school independently while under an MOU, and that all the major construction decisions would have to go through VDOE, which would only increase and delay timelines. And finally, I'm disappointed that I attended a public meeting at George With that was requested by my representative and where the community came out in droves, and not one speaker said it was worth delaying the build of George With so that schools can build schools, yet she has refused to even question her decision. There were many supporters at last week's meeting of the idea of schools building schools, and I myself do not have a strong opinion on it, but the meeting made it clear that this is not the time. In addition to delaying the build of a school that has rats and mice and an inability to support modern technology, if RPS were to take on building schools right now, it will distract the administration's attention from what it needs to be solely focused on. Jeannie Balker. It is wonderful to see some of the federal stimulus money. $65 million will be going to address elementary literacy in RPS. Could some of the federal money also go towards longstanding facilities needed for the district? The CIP is historically underfunded, and this additional funding could go towards addressing facilities disparities across the city. Additionally, some of the money could also go to our middle and high schools, including addressing literacy, and also towards expanding core selection and decreasing class size. This additional funding could help address opportunity disparities for our middle and high schoolers compared to those in the counties. Lakeisha Williams. Good afternoon. My name is Lakeisha Williams. I am a parent and a teacher of the eighth district. When the board announced that school reopened for the summer, I was very happy, thinking I was doing what was right for my children. When it was time to attend orientation, there was none due to someone hacking the Zoom link, and it was rescheduled to a later date that never happened. On the first day of summer school, no one could tell me where my children should go. Transportation was a disgrace. I put my children on the bus at 8:21 a.m., and they did not arrive at school until 10:35 a.m. Where did they go? Because they didn't make it home until 6 p.m. Why? So we are having to put up with all of this because in April, y'all launched the board with something that should not have been done at this time. And now, not only my children, but other families have had to quarantine. In addition, I can't go to work. So what will happen for the rest of the summer or the fall? Because I have attended all of the community conversations, and nothing was told to me that we would have class sizes reaching over 25. This is not safe. Also, children not being assigned to a designated area could be the cause of this positive case and not being able to do contact tracing. Maybe we should table all other conversations until we know our kids are safe going back to school. Melanie Barker. After reviewing the post-COVID literacy plan, I am writing to express how exciting it is to see an emphasis on reading for pleasure and getting books into the hands of students. It is heartening to read about the proposal for fully-funded classroom libraries, a well-resourced lit limo, and the RPS book vending machines in elementary schools. However, I am disappointed to see no mention of increased budgets for RPS school libraries. Ensuring that our school libraries are supported and well-stocked with a high-interest diverse collection is one way to provide all RPS students access to books. Our school libraries and school librarians are integral parts of students' reading success. Tara Fitzpatrick. My name is Tara Fitzpatrick. I am a resident of the second district, with students enrolled in their own schools in the third district. I am asking the school board to support Liz Dorr's motion to have RPS join the city of Richmond's RFP in rebuilding George With High School. Philip Tickle. It has been stated in meeting after meeting that the will of the board should be followed. However, what about the will of the people? Some school board members won a majority of votes cast, but not even half the votes. When the schools build schools proposal was motioned and put to a vote without a single minute of consideration for the will of the people, without a minute of public comment, and without time to carefully weigh the possible consequences of such an action, this was an abdication of your responsibilities as leaders. The people spoke resoundingly at last week's meeting at George With. The time to compromise with the mayor is now. Have the city issue the RFP and begin the process of building a new George With as soon as possible. The school administration can assume responsibility when properly staffed and equipped to do so. But until then, rely on the expertise and resources of the city government. To do otherwise is a woeful neglect of your roles as leaders and officials elected to represent the will of the people, not simply the will of the board. Sandra Antoine. With sadness, I am emailing you to discuss an urgency as it pertains to the building of George With High School. I deem this as being a matter of the staff and students' health and safety. In the pleading words of Rodney King, quote, "Can't we all just get along?" end quote, our children's lives depend on it, our lives depend on it. How can we expect the dreams of better tomorrows to become a reality if the dreamers are constantly faced with the educational challenges of today? And that concludes tonight's public commentary.
Thank you, Mr. Vasco. Thank you, Attorney Lilly, and thank you to each of you that shared your letters this evening. We did hear everyone, and thank you so much for your submissions. We'll now move along with the agenda as amended. And the next item is 6.01. An update on George With High School. And before we move forward with that, I have one announcement to make. Just as a reminder of when we have that discussion, to be mindful that we have three submissions under that, and they include, number one, a letter from Mrs. Gibson to Mayor Stony; number two, the resolution by Mrs. Dorr; and number three, a proposal by Mr. Young. And I ask that in discussion, we move in that order. I also would like to have Ms. Nicole Jones, Ms. Jones, there you are. Would you be so kind to remind us of our, what we adopted under our last formal meeting regarding the governance manual? And how many minutes each person gets to speak and how many times moving forward? Because it is most important that we address George With, our conversation from last week, our meeting from last week, which was well-attended. That we also be mindful that we have school reopening, we have literacy, we have stimulus, things that we have continuously put off on the budget because of the longevity. So we do want to abide by what we voted on regarding the governance manual. Ms. Jones, would you remind us of that, and for those of us who don't have that in front of us? And for the viewers as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, everyone. Absolutely, the reminder. Under board meeting discussion procedure, school board members should ask, which we all know to be recognized to speak, but the highlighted point that we are making tonight is board members will speak to the topic at hand and will be limited to six minutes total. What we agreed upon was three minutes per discussion. Board chair and vice chair will keep board members accountable to those, to these expectations. If a board member has stated a point, it does not need to be restated. So what we are saying here is that if you would like to speak, please be recognized to speak. Understand that your comments or questions should last no more than three minutes. And if someone has already stated the point, please do not restate what has already been stated again, as Madam Chair said, so that we can continue to keep the conversation moving forward. Everyone will have an opportunity to speak, but we do ask that if, you know, you speak on, you speak directly to the issue at hand, and do not deviate away from that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair of that committee, and again, thank you to those committee members. Would you name those committee members again, Ms. Jones? I don't want to forget anyone.
Absolutely. That would be Ms. Page, Ms. Dr. Harris Mohammed, Ms. White, and myself, the Governance Committee. We all voted on this per last meeting.
Thank you so very much. All right, so question for you, Ms. Jones. We have just listed three topics per se under 6.01. Does that mean each person has three minutes per Ms. Gibson's letter, three minutes per Ms. Dorr's resolution, three minutes per proposal from Mr. Young? Or is that three minutes totally under 6.01? Go ahead, please. I'm looking to you for advisement.
Yeah, so it's a total of six minutes, three minutes per discussion, but if you all, you can speak twice, but if someone has already stated it, we ask that you don't restate the point.
All right. All right. Thank you so very much. First item is draft letter to Mayor Stony. Ms. Gibson, do you want to lead off with that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In the, in light of trying to save time, I, I think that it might make sense to get consensus on the board on which item to discuss next. The letter, I believe, probably would come after, if we're talking, there are a couple proposals on the table. And if we were to move forward with them, that would obviously adjust what the letter says. So I think we have a cart before the horse. It would be my preference to begin with the resolution, I'm sorry, with the proposal shared by my colleague, Mr. Young. And I think, you know, if we would go around to just determine, you know, where we begin, I think that would save us, save us some time. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Ms. Gibson. Because we did not address this at our meeting at George With, I was following through on what was already in writing, moving forward. However, if there is a a motion or whatever to change the, the listing here is already planned. I don't have a problem with that. We can do that. And Ms. Jones, I ask you, who is keeping time? We didn't say anything about a timekeeper. Would that be a Madam Clerk?
Absolutely, if she doesn't mind. I don't see Ms. Quark on here.
Is it possible that Ms. Lilly could help me with keeping time? I'm trying to record to key and keep time at the same time.
Thank you. You do a little bit of everything. So between the two of you all, I appreciate that. What's the consensus of the board? Ms. Gibson, do you want to make that a, a motion that we change the arrangement of what was already in place?
I don't believe this requires a motion. I just think we should get consensus from the group. What we should start with our discussion, and my perspective, is that it would make sense to begin the discussion with Mr. Young's proposal, and then go from there. If there are, if there's consensus, perhaps everyone can raise their hand if they agree. That would probably be the quickest way to move forward.
Ms. Lilly, would you advise on that, please?
Well, I do see several folks in the chat that have comments that may want to weigh in on the very question that Ms. Gibson has stated. So you probably would want to go with your comments first.
All right, Mr. Young, can you see the comments? Can you tell us who's in order to speak?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Page, then Dr. Harris Mohammed, then Ms. Dorr.
Ms. Mrs. Page, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My comment is regarding the letter. First, I would like to say thank you, Ms. Gibson, for creating a draft. But my comment is, I do not think that that letter is worthy for the board to discuss, and these are my reasons. The board tasked you with a clear directive. The board had no opportunity to weigh in on the draft of the letter that you were tasked to create a draft in response to the mayor. It was disrespectful. You disrespected each and every one of You disrespected each and every one of us on the board because we had no opportunity to weigh in. And as soon as you sent the draft to the board, you turn around and sent it to the media. So there was no consensus from the board on the letter, but you still sent it out to media outlets. And so it is my, this letter is your letter. It's not the board's letter. Is this a normal practice that we send out, we task board members to do assignment? And, and we say we're going to let board members weigh in, provide feedback. But before we get consensus of the board, it's sent to the media. So my question is, is this going to be normal practice going forward?
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Would you like to answer that at this time?
We're not supposed to be addressing each other, I don't believe, in meetings. I've made a suggestion that we, I'm trying to, to move forward with this agenda item.
Well, we've done it before. So this, this, if you'd like to answer upon that, we can just keep going with the flow. Either one is fine with me. May Mr. Young add my name to this as well. Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I think that since I am hearing that all board members have not had an opportunity to provide feedback to the letter in any form, the form or opinion doesn't matter. I have heard clearly from my colleague in the eighth that she was not able to provide that feedback. The reason to me, for me, that she was not able to do that is not my concern. My concern is that she wasn't able to. So maybe somebody else wasn't able to provide feedback. So I think if we want to practice, and I just, I want you all to hear my heart. If we want to practice trust, then we need to allow everyone to provide feedback. I think that's a start for us to do that. That's my opinion. But, you know, it's, I just wanted to share that. But I do think it's critically important that whatever the comment is, whatever the feedback is, good, better, indifferent, that every single one of us have that opportunity to do so. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr., excuse me, Ms. Dorr?
Thank you. Yes, I agree with Dr. Harris Mohammed. I think it makes sense to address these items in the order that they were received. I think that's the most equitable way, and I think we should not waste any more time debating on talking about, talking about something and just get to the meat of the business. So I am in supportive. Let's talk about the mayor's letter. And then I'm eager to hear Mr. Young's proposal, eager to present mine as well.
Any other comments? Anybody else, Mr. Young?
Madam Chair, you are up next.
Thank you, Mr. Young. I'm stating my position on this. So the floor is yours in terms of being the chair at this point. When I received the letter that was sent to all the board members, and I'm not going to repeat, but it's the same as Mrs. Page stated. And when I went back to board docs, excuse me, to YouTube, because that meeting was not taped on board docs, to review the, I asked Mrs. Gibson to pin the letter and that hopefully the board will have an opportunity during the week of the 12th to have input and that we would have reached consensus, which means everyone will have an opportunity to collaborate and place their positions collectively for Mrs. Gibson to put together. So I too was surprised to see that a letter was scripted and given to the media. My phone was, was just blowing up with phone calls and they read it before I read it. So I don't know what the breakdown of communication there is. But if we're reaching consensus right now in terms of moving forward, I am in favor of moving in, in according to what was given to us in place in a timely manner moving forward. The letter, resolution, and proposal. Thank you. Anyone else, Mr. Young?
No, ma'am.
Thumbs up, thumbs down? Is that what you all want to do regarding the order of the agenda? How many times we use already, Ms. Quark? I'm glad you, I can keep the time and the whatever both.
Okay.
All right, so.
I do not have the total time, but I'm doing, trying to do my best with capturing individual times. And so we have a few folks that have spoken. No one has spoken over two minutes yet.
Excellent. Thank you. So we have a minute and what are go times to. All right, otherwise, if there isn't any other discussion, we will move forward as listed. Draft letter to Mayor Stony. There's any discussion regarding that, resolution, Ms. Dorr, proposal, Mr. Young. Any other discussion regarding the draft letter to Mayor Stony from Mrs. Gibson? Any motions or discussion moving forward on that correspondence? Mr. Young, have we any?
Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Dr. Harris Mohammed, the floor is yours.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. I think before we send the letter to the mayor officially on school board letterhead, I'm not sure whose letterhead it would be on, but I really, I just think all board members need to provide their feedback to the letter. And then after Ms. Gibson has all of the feedback from all eight board members, send it back out to all of us, let us review, and then have, you know, move forward on it. I just think that is prudent and a good practice that, that we should have a voice. If the comment that Shonda sends is not accepted, that doesn't mean that Shonda did not have an opportunity to have a voice in the letter, and that's important to me. So I would like to move forward that way. It's okay if my board colleagues do not agree. But I think we, we will set a precedent that is very shaky if we do not. So I want us to think about this. And I think that should happen.
Dr. Harris Mohammed, did you want to make that a motion at this time?
Okay, let me get the motion straight, and I'll put it in the chat. I move that we allow all board members to provide feedback to the letter that has been drafted for the mayor. Upon receiving feedback, we then submit the letter to the entire board for approval.
Do you want to add a date to that or leave it?
I was getting rid of this. I just realized I didn't add a date when I was. So thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we allow all board members to provide, to provide feedback for the draft letter to the mayor within 72 hours. And then allow the board members to have a consensus on the letter moving forward to the mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Dr. Harris Mohammed and seconded by Mrs. Jones that we will have a, the opportunity to have input on the letter within 72 hours, just not to the mayor, but city council members as well as a draft to be seen by all of us before moving forward with a draft from Mrs. Gibson. Are we ready to vote? Any questions? Excuse me. Is it questions, discussion?
Mr. Young? Ms. Page and Ms. White.
Ms. Page, the floor is yours.
Yes, Madam Chair. I would hope that my colleagues would, this draft letter would be based on facts, based on factual information. Because as the draft letter currently stands, there's a lot of misinformation in that draft letter. And my integrity means a lot. And I think each and every one of us, integrity means a lot to us. So again, we have 72 hours. We need, we need to make sure that the draft letter is based on factual information versus misinformation. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. White, the floor is yours. Ms. White, where is she? We can't hear you, Ms. White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm a little under the weather this evening.
You look gorgeous as always.
My two, I have a question. I know it's 72 hours for the draft, and whoever choose to actually put their input in, who would this draft letter goes to? And I would hope everyone would be honest. I hear that my colleague said to be as honest as possible. But I would probably say that it's based on the individual themselves and who would determine what goes into the letter after it is completed or drafted.
Well, what I would hope, Ms. White, if I may answer, that if, I think it's a good idea if we practice what we discussed in an earlier governance meeting, that we all would copy each other, but the letter would be written to your comments. My comments will be written to Mrs. Gibson. This is my suggestion for the letter.
Okay, so then all of them will go to Ms. Gibson?
Right. But I ask that everybody's copied, because you and I may say the same thing, so she would not have to repeat it. But that everyone does have an opportunity to say what he or she likes, what dislike, or what facts do we have to back this? Just to make sure, as I stated at our last meeting before our call meeting, that we, we show that we're collaborating. And it's not just about the mayor, but it's about the city council members as well, that we just collaborate. And I look forward to what Mrs. Dr. Harris Mohammed stated earlier, that we build a sense of trust and collaborate on this as well. And I do ask that before the letter is, is given to the media, which is listed in our governance manual, that we work, we can be transparent, but that we work together before it's, it's rendered at a different level before the board has even had a chance to, to read the letter. So let's copy each other so we all can see each other's comments. Because if you make a comment, Ms. White, that I was going to make, I would say I'm in agreement with Mrs. White and leave it at that.
Okay, so everything goes to Ms. Gibson. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Dr. Harris Mohammed, I do see your motion in the chat. Mr. Young, are there any more questions, discussion regarding the letter to city council and the mayor regarding?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Jones is next, to be followed by Ms. Gibson.
Ms. Jones, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm good. I had a question that was already answered. Thank you.
You saved one minute. Very good. All right, Ms. Gibson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I plan on abstaining from this motion. I, I believe it's most appropriate to give feedback in a public meeting. This is a public body. And so I shared the draft with the board so that it could be discussed at a, at a public meeting, which I believe is the best practice. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Anybody else, Mr. Young?
No, ma'am.
All right. It was moved by Dr. Harris Mohammed and seconded by whom, Mr. Young? Ms. Jones?
And I'll put it in the chat. And I believe Ms. Rizzi had a question, but I'll put it in chat.
All right, Mr. Young, forget Ms. Rizzi. Ms. Rizzi, can you hear us?
I don't have a question. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'm glad that you can hear, and we can hear you. All right, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Madam Clerk?
District one, Elizabeth Dorr.
Yes.
District two, Mariah White.
Yes.
District three, Kenya Gibson.
Abstain.
District four, Jonathan Young.
Aye.
District five, Stephanie Rizzi.
Yes.
District six, Shonda Harris Mohammed.
Yes.
District seven, Cheryl Burke.
Yes.
District eight, Dawn Page.
Yes.
District nine, Nicole Jones.
Yes.
The motion passed eight to zero.
All right, it's been passed that within 72, 72 hours, we put in our input to be a part of the letter written in response to the city council and mayor's request to compromise and come to the table to collaborate. Next item is resolution. Mrs. Dorr, would you like to bring that to the table?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I introduce my resolution, I want to give, make a couple of points around the background, just for the public certification. My inspiration for the proposal, and really it's not mine, it's, you've seen this for a couple of months. Ms. Jones and I drafted something similar, but as things have changed, we've updated it. Why the other proposal tonight you hear, while I commend my team, my team members for attempting a compromise that's not viable, in my opinion, and then I'll close with my thoughts around common sense. So, background, Schools Build Schools was introduced in April. I'll admit it was introduced and voted on without public comment late into the night, but that's water under the bridge. Very few of us would disagree that with, with the general premise. I do think that schools building schools is a great idea. We should have the power to construct our own buildings. The inconvenient truth about this resolution, and I truly blame the lack of following our process, is that it in effect unintentionally delays the construction of George With. George With will be delayed because, one, RPS must hire its own procurement and construction staff. And two, the type of procurement we undergo has implications. My proposal, after an attempt to address some of our concerns, the mayor and several members of city council introduced a compromise. Hearing no response from our board, the mayor went ahead and issued the RFP for construction of With to ensure there is no delay. The mayor sent a letter to our board to inform us of this, us of this release and invited us to sit on the evaluation committee. It was also offered that full ownership of this RFP would be transferred to RPS once we have staff in place. My proposal simply authorizes the RPS administration to add individuals to the RFP evaluation committee so that we can avoid delays. The public has asked us over again, over and over again, why can't the city just release the RFP to RPS? And the issue is that there are confidentiality requirements and the administration of the RFP takes time and resources. Thus, the only way to ensure that we can retain this RFP and avoid delays is to adjoin the evaluation panel. The intent of my resolution is that we have a win-win-win. We ensure there's no delay for George With. We address any concerns about the challenges of insourcing this massive school construction budget. And it gives us time to develop a transition plan so that schools can build schools. The other proposal tonight you will hear is not viable, in my opinion. One, it does not solve the main issue that we don't want to delay the building of George With. Like it or not, the truth is that if we rely on RPS to release its own RFP, there'll be delays. Many of us and hundreds of community members from the George With community during last week's two-hour public comment session agree. Yes, it's true that there's an opportunity to save money by schools building schools and by potentially moving to construction manager at risk. But it is also true that we've incurred money by having delays, hiring additional headcount, et cetera. So I ask us tonight, is potentially saving money the most important thing? Or is it to get kids into safe, productive buildings as long, as soon as possible? It's a valid debate, but I ask all of us tonight, what side do you come down on? The superintendent has said repeatedly that he does not yet have the team in place to issue and respond to RFPs in our own. So I, while I believe that Mr. Young's proposal is introduced with good intent, it does not do anything to change where we are today. If schools build schools and we do not join this RFP evaluation committee, George With will be delayed, full stop. There are some other details within this motion that I'll address when Mr. Young introduces it that I don't believe to be thought through, such as we've not vetted the size of George With, the availability of funds to build two new schools, payment plans to the city of Richmond, et cetera. So even though tonight the board voted, not me, but the consensus of the board voted to move George With to the first point on the agenda. And I think that really speaks to where we are as a board. Why do we continue to prioritize this tit-for-tat with the city and RPS and building George With over literally everything else? I'm looking at the RTD homepage and I see Hanover talking about plans for next year. I see Chesterfield talking about their new curriculum. I see Petersburg talking about summer school. And in Richmond, we continue to talk about George With. Is this really what we should be focusing on? It's taken up all of the oxygen in the room and our kids are suffering. You guys, we aren't just missing the forest for the trees. We're missing the forest for forest fires. Please, let's move forward with George With and focus on reopening and student achievement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dorr. Any other questions or concerns regarding Mrs. Dorr's resolution, Mr. Young?
No, ma'am.
So I'll formally, I didn't formally introduce it. May I do that, Madam Chair?
Please do.
Whereas Richmond Public Schools has the goal to ensure that every child is educated in a state-of-the-art and safe learning facility. Whereas in 2018, the Richmond School Board adopted a facilities plan to modernize. Whereas in 2018, the Richmond School Board adopted a facilities plan to modernize school facilities. Whereas the 2018 facilities plan prioritized George With to be part, to be built as part of Phase One. Whereas George With was built in 1960, is rotting in plain sight and posing a safety risk to students and staff. Whereas any delay to the construction of George With is not in the best interest of students, staff, teachers in the city. Whereas changes to existing school construction practices will result in significant delays. Whereas it, it has been widely reported by city procurement and Richmond Public Schools that the only way to ensure a 2025 opening is to authorize the city of Richmond to issue a request for proposal for design architectural services in June 2021. Whereas on June 17th, the city of Richmond issued an RFP for, for design services. Whereas RPS is invited to participate in the evaluation panel, as proposals cannot be distributed to RPS personnel unless they are appointed as members of the evaluation panel due to confidential, confidentiality requirements that are in place after a contract is executed. Whereas the issuance of the RFP does not delay RPS the ability to build its own schools, but rather it gets the process started, so we can build a new George With as soon as possible. Whereas the city of Richmond has agreed to transfer ownership of the RFP once RPS has its staff in place to insource school construction. Whereas if RPS declines to participate as voting members of the RFP evaluation panel, the process toward building a new George With will once again be delayed. Therefore, be it resolved, that this board directs the administration to appoint members to join the RFP evaluation panel and proceed with procurement in partnership with the city for the construction of George With. This will ensure that students and staff are welcomed as soon as possible into a safe, modern building that allows them to reach their highest potential, and for teachers to teach at their fullest capacity.
Thank you, Mrs. Dorr. Mr. Young, do we have comments or questions listed?
Yes, ma'am, in the following order. Harris Muhammad.
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi. Madam Chair, you would follow Ms. Rizzi, and then Ms. White.
All right. Dr. Harris Muhammad, the floor is yours. Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Dorr, thank you for, um, you and Ms. Jones, for working together on the, on this resolution. I want to share with you, if you did not know, I want you to know right now, that you could call me at any time to discuss anything that you want to share, at which time I would have shared with you professional, professionally, my heartache with parts of your resolution. Um, I am very concerned about, and, and I think my concerns are valid, that evidence has demonstrated there are some challenges with the city taking control of building schools. I've stated that before, I'm stating that now. Your, when I read your resolution, it did not explicitly say to me as a school board member, that we would retain power. Um, and so I, I wanted to share those two pieces, but absolutely, call me at any time, and I could have discussed that with you, and um, this is a part of having those conversations offline sometimes, eliminate our four hours to, to the meetings extra, uh, you know, everyone may not agree. And lastly, it also builds a collaboration. So you can hear what the other person is thinking, because sometimes you may be wrong, and, and be willing to, to admit that in a one-on-one conversation. But I do appreciate you and Ms. Jones working on this. I just will be voting no at this time. Thank you. Thank you. The next person is Mr. Rizzi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, also, I was not consulted about this, um, and I would have liked to have had some input on it, if I were to, you know, consider voting for it. Um, and, you know, I, I am in total agreement with Ms. Page, who talked about like, you know, reputation and, and how your name is something that, you know, is more valuable to, I mean, to me than anything is, you know, the, the, my, my integrity. And in fact, you know, I read scripture, I know a lot of you do, perhaps, before meetings. And the one I picked tonight was um, Proverbs 22, about your good name is more valuable to you than any kind of riches, um, or any kind of financial reward. And so, you know, I think it's kind of interesting that that um, theme came up tonight. Uh, my, 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 my main um, issue with this is that, first of all, no, I don't see it explicitly stated that school boards will be driving, or that schools, not just school boards, but schools, RPS will be driving this process. Um, I don't see a specific breakdown of what the evaluation panel will look like, how many representatives from RPS, how many reps from the city. Um, let's see, our schools, I wrote some notes in charge of, um... You know, I, I honestly am not sure if the fact that, you know, us, you know, as a board, as a board, I want to repeat that, passing this resolution necessarily had to lead to a delay in George With, and believe me, there is no one um, here, you know, we all, we all, we all want to build George With as soon as possible. I, I think it's ridiculous to um, suggest otherwise. There's not a person on this board that doesn't want George With built yesterday. That's the, that's the God-honest truth. There is not one person, every single one of us here has a long history of community participation, community advocacy. There's nobody here that doesn't want George With built yesterday. But, you know, for me, it was a point of a lack of um, transparency, a lack of following the process prior to the release of the RFP that was released without even consulting us. Um, I'd ask questions, because I wanted to give constituents more details about what was happening with George With. I was put off, I was told things that aren't true, that are not holding up right now. Um, as soon as this resolution passed, then it was announced that there was an RFP when that could have been told to me long before then, and I could have communicated that to my constituents. And so, you know, this didn't have to be this way. Um, I really think that the mayor could have come forward and said, hey, how can I help you guys? You know, this is something that people think is a good idea, you know, it works in other places. How can we support you in making this transfer? This didn't have to be this big acrimonious debate, and so, um, you know, I just want to express those things. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzi. Um, Mrs. Lilly and Mrs. Clark, are you all keeping the time? Because mine is showing otherwise, please help us with that. And colleagues, uh... Excuse me?
Do you want me to tell you where you are at this point, or?
No, as people are speaking, because we're going over, either put it in the chat, so that we can...
Oh, okay, okay. I'll...
All right, um, next person is, uh, Ms. Rizzi, is me. Ms. White, did you want to go before me, dear? You're more than welcome to. I know I'm not supposed to defer in Robert rules, but I don't see your face there, Ms. White. You are witness.
Go right there.
Okay, and Tommy as well. Um, colleagues, thank you so very much, Mrs. Dorr and Mrs. Jones, because you are making an effort to put things on the table. And colleagues, when, when we, Mr. Young, you, you are chairing now. When we receive emails or whatever else, if there are questions, you can pick up the phone or email that person as well. If I send something to you and I don't get anything back, I'm thinking you're okay with it, or you're mulling over it. But um, so far as reaching out to, that's, that's, that's your personal preference. There's nothing written that you have to call a person beforehand, that's up to you, and, and your personality style as well. Actually, I try as chair to be as, as neutral as possible across the board. But I want to say this, and this goes back to how I was brought up and how I was raised. All right, George With, it breaks my heart, it saddens me. See, I, I grew up during school choice, segregation, then integration. Separate but equal, but in this stance, separate but unequal. I lived it, the old textbooks, the whole nine yards. And just as a gentleman spoke at George With, With the other day that just got out, just having been incarcerated, stating that With reminded him, looking at the walls, looking at the odor and the sense of just walking in the building, it's, it's institutionalized. So, as we continue to say, who's in charge, who's not in charge? I just want us to make the decision to move on. Whomever is in charge, it's because in the end, not any of us are in charge, all right? In the end, not any of us are in charge. And also, we speak about the democratic piece here. City council, every, every voter, every taxpayer, city council members are voted in. We look at the data of per, the, how many votes each of us, of each of us received, and also each of us and each of those in city council. And majority of us that won, the, the, uh, Ms. Dorr, Ms., Ms. Page, myself, uh, Ms. Jones, we carried the vote, when you break it down. Same thing with city council, the mayor had, this is out there that he had um, less than, he had over forty-one thousand votes. All right, but my, my point, and, and to make a long story short, I heard the cries of George With. I've been through George With, and then before school, or the summer school, to have been at River City, which is a college atmosphere at its highest point. Just to walk in and see orange here, green there, you can have a prison clean, but it's not a welcoming environment. And when I think of the children that look like me, we speak, that we're speaking for the have-nots, and we want to know who's going to have complete control. In the end, not any of us going to have complete control, but I am in favor. And I will say this until the end, of, I can sit down at the table with you and agree to disagree. That's collaboration. Who's going to have charge in the end? The children will have charge in the end, because it's about them being successful. Yes, we all want to have George With built. But I haven't heard, narrow soul, I'm saying it like my grandmother would, call in, text, phone, email, we can wait until you are higher your folk. When is the time right? How long must we wait? It, it, it bothers me greatly. It bothers me because I look like the children. No, I didn't grow up with many challenges they had, I was blessed. However, I was brought up to be cognizant of those around us. So when we say that, oh, who's going to be in charge, who's going to, let's all be in charge, but at the end, if we want to quote the Bible, who is in charge? So until the very end, I stand tall, I stand with that community. I heard you, because at the end, we own nothing. The dust from whence we came is the dust of which we will return. So it, 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 it bothers me greatly, and I'm so, 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 so hot, disheartened. And I know it doesn't matter to you all, it doesn't matter how I feel. And it's because it's not about my feelings, it's about those children that I see every day. It's about those twenty-five homeless children at George With, of whom I go over there and take clothes and shoes and whatever else, because of organizations I'm in and food. Never had a birthday cake, and the only free, clean area they want to have is that of a school setting. And we're going to sit here tonight, not hearing our constituency, even though they voted us in. You are heard, the folks in the end, and said, nobody wants us to build that school here more than all of us. But how long, is Dr. Martin Luther King would say, not long. How long? Not long. And I have complete faith that George With, With will be built ASAP, because in the end, the battle is not mine, nor yours. Thank you. Mr. Young, anybody else who's after me? Ms. White, the chairs, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and um, like I said, I hope you can hear me. If you can't, just let me know.
We hear you, Ms. White.
I want to come back to our focus. Our focus is compromising, collaboration, and education. And I hear what you're saying, I hear what everyone is saying, but no one has been fighting for these schools more and longer than I have.
Well, that's a matter of opinion, Ms. White. We all have, we all have. This is not a our conversation, and that we all have.
Can I finish my conversation?
Yes, you can, but be mindful, please, that all of us are child-oriented folks, that's why we're...
I think you're out of, I think you're out of turn.
Well, I'm, well, I'm out, I'm out.
Let me finish what I have to say.
Please, but please be mindful.
Please let me finish what I have to say, Madam President.
Please do.
Because you're out of turn.
Well...
As usual, but as I was saying, we need to get back to our focus of compromising, collaboration, and education. And no one has been as an advocate as I have. And I thank you, Ms. Dorr, I thank you, Ms. Jones, for putting this proposal together. But I have some questions. What section of the RFP will this impact? This, this uh, resolution that you came about was good, but it was no specifics. And what I need is specifics. And what I also need to know is, looking at the RFP, because I have it here, will the design committee be the city or the schools? My other question is, after reading the RFP, I see where the RFP is requesting that each offer, submit at least two desires who is going to review and score the RFP. These are the things that I'm looking at. We're talking about compromising and collaboration of a RFP. We're not talking about where we been or where we're going, because we have schools that are dilapidated, and all of them need fixing, whether it's to rebuild, or whether it is to renovate. Tonight, we're talking about collaboration and renovating. So those are the things that I am looking at. What kind of study was completed to confirm that the capacity of students should be up to two thousand? I haven't heard any of that. All I keep hearing is about, oh, what the community said, and the leaders have said, and I thank them for coming out, because I used to be one of those also. But when I look at the community and the leaders, and I thank them today for reiterating the letters in the, in the, in the public comments, because half of those that stood before us for two hours just did the public comments tonight. So if we're, if we're really say what we are as a school board, collaborate, collaborate, and educate, I'm ready to do it tonight. So whatever, whoever has the res, the resolution, that I see that is forfeit, that has exactly what it is, specifics, because I'm sure, we worked for the mayor's RFP that was thrown at us. Some people said we don't have a plan, and I had to tell you, I always have a plan, and a contingency plan, that's how I was taught. So, if you're saying, no one has a plan, I do. I just want you to know that I do, but I really want to hear the other resolutions. The only thing about Ms. Dorr's resolution, you did not have enough specifics for me, so I can't go with that tonight. But if there is another one with specifics, you may have my vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Is anyone else?
Yes, ma'am, in the following order, Ms. Page, then Ms. Dorr, then Ms. Jones, then Ms. Rizzi.
Thank you. Ms. Page, the floor is yours. Ms. Page?
Yeah, um... I'm at a loss for words. Schools, schools should build schools. I totally agree with that. We had this conversation back in two thousand and nine. But then, we didn't have the capacity, nor was it feasible. Pretty much the same situation we are in now, because the positions have not been filled, construction, procurement, and currently, the administration lacks the skill set. So... I support Ms. Dorr's resolution, and thank her and Ms. Jones for collaborating, putting this together. But this is just a a negotiating point, because we still can make adjustments going forward. But we have to collaborate. And it saddens me, because while we are spending all of this time going back and forth, back and forth, our students are the ones that are losing out. Our staff are the ones losing out, because they are working in a unsafe working environment, in deplorable condi, conditions, as well as our students are learning in a deplorable learning facility. You know, they see poverty away from school, and they come to school and see poverty all over again. This is, this is nothing but... This is, this is, this is nothing but clearly. Systemic racism. You can call it what you want. I'm calling, calling it like it is. Because some say, oh, I'm calling the race card. You can call it what you want, but this is systemic racism. And we ought to be ashamed of ourselves that we have spent all of this time going back and forth. When we have so much more to talk about, such as reopening. Making sure that it's safe. For our students and our staff to return. You know, we have other schools in the facility playing. I attended Georgetown. I attended Georgetown building as Jefferson-Huguenot with. That is. A part of my community. That's who I am. So. I have lived. With some, with those stu- our students are experiencing. Shame on us. Because this is about our children. This is about student achievement. And we spend all of this time when the city holds the purse strings. And we have been collaborating. And I will hope going forward that we can continue. To collaborate, working together. Because. If we don't control the purse strings. Is this another power play? Again, let, let us collaborate. We were all elected to do a job. Making decisions at the best interest. On behalf of the citizens that we serve and our students. So please let us collaborate. And move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Mrs. Um, who's next, Mr. Young, Mrs. Dora?
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Harris Mohammed and Ms. Rizzi, I truly appreciate your comments. And my bad, noted for next time. I will definitely give a ring. And I can, I know your frustration because I was frustrated with Jonathan earlier today because he did not call me before he issued his resolution and I gave him an earful. So, but I still love you, Jonathan. So to that end, I mean, it has been out for, you know, a month or so. But I think your points are valid and I would be willing to amend my resolution to add the following language that strengthens. The RFP evaluation committee as well as the binding nature of schools building schools. I'll read it to you in a second. Just to be clear, the reason why I can't support Mr. Young's proposal is because. I think that if RPS has to issue the RFP, it will delay. Because the superintendent and the administration do not have the staff in place to issue the RFP. So the reason why I would like for us to tack on to the city's RFP and then transfer that RFP to us. Is because that does not require us to have staff in place today. So that's the nuance that Jonathan, Jonathan and I talked through today. And we debated. But anyways. I would be willing to add the following language to my resolution that says. Therefore, be it resolved that this board directs the administration to appoint members to join the RFP evaluation panel. And proceed with procurement and partnership for the city for the construction of George With. The school board in the city of Richmond. Will join the existing RFP evaluation panel to be comprised of no fewer than seven persons, including no fewer than three city employees. And four RPS employees. And no more than nine persons, including no more than four city employees and five RPS employees. To review school and score proposals and award a con- award a contract for design services of a new George With high school. The affirmation panel shall include the RPS facilities, oh, sorry, not that part. Shall, the affirmation panel shall include the RPS facilities planner and RPS director of facilities. Let it be clear that this resolution ensures that schools build schools. And that the RFP will be transferred to RPS once we have our procurement staff in place. The timeline, timeline for transitioning schools to be, build schools will be reported out at monthly school board meetings. I don't know if that works for y'all. Would welcome your feedback.
Thank you, Ms. Dora. Ms. Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too thank everyone for their feedback regarding the resolution. But what I wanted to share really quickly was the fact that. I joined Ms. Dora on the resolution because, to be honest, we, we wanted to just get something moving. It wasn't about not communicating with anyone or not letting folks know what was going down, because any of you know, I don't operate like that. I don't have no problem with calling or, you know, pulling up on a powwow to talk about things, to hear each other's feedback. But the biggest thing that stood out to me, and I'm just going to go ahead and put this out there, and I shared this with my colleague. Most of this has been a lot of finger pointing and I also noticed that when one. You know, colleague puts out a resolution, we then go into, you know, a breakdown as to why we can't support it. Because you didn't give us this, you didn't give us that, and vice versa. And we've been going through this for months now. But the reality of it, and I've said this before, is that this is a two-way relationship. And while we are continuing to point fingers at the city. For me, I felt like the reason why I was okay with supporting the resolution is because we also need to shine a light on ourselves. And I think that it is very, very disheartening for me to come in. Six months into this seat and say that I know for a fact that the mayor has done X, Y, and Z. And if I haven't done my due diligence and research, then that is on me. However, from what I've seen, I can't, you know, theoretically say that all of it is factual. And so I am tasked with believing what social media says or what the public is saying. When I sit on a board with all of you guys, and I still am fully confused. About whose fault it is as to why we are in the predicament that we are in. So I am not supporting because I'm against the resolution that was put forth earlier. Because I'm against schools not building schools, because I'm with group A or group B. I am trying to be a part of change. I'm on the side of change. And at the end of the day, we keep saying that this stuff is factual and this is why folks vote the way that they vote, and I respect that. I have said it before. I'm going to say it again. And I might be a little slow and I'll take that. Because this is my first rodeo on school board. But I need you all to help me fully understand that if this is factual, that the city have done these things that you all are saying they've done. Then where are we also holding and taking responsibility as the school boy? Because at the end of the day, if that is the case, then did we just sit there and let these things happen? And if so, then I think that some onus needs to be on us. And this is why I supported a collaborative transition. This is why I supported compromise with the mayor. Because to blame one side essentially says that what we, we haven't done any wrong. And so I think for me, I can't sit here and say that what happened for a whole term ago. I think I would be a little out of place to say that. So that's why I supported the resolution and I was hoping that we would all be able to support a collaborative, collaborative transition. Specifically if it let moved to us, you know, schools building schools. So again, I, I, I don't, I, I'm still, you know, processing all of these facts that everyone. And I'm, I'm just being upfront with you guys. I mean, I love you all, but I still don't understand where we, why we ping ponging back and forth. And so it, you know, if it's not going to be a collaborative transition, that's fine, but I don't want to be deemed as I'm voting against or I'm voting with. I'm being honest and I'm saying it right now. I'm voting in the middle because I have yet to see all of these facts, facts. That, you know, we say exists. And if I'm on the board and I still don't understand that. Again, that could be my shortcomings. I own that. But I think that as a board member, it's maybe the rest of the board's due diligence to make sure that I understand since we say it's the rule of the board. So in that case, that's why I supported the resolution and I'm looking to support, like I said earlier, a collaborative transition. Be it the city and us work with them. Or even if we own whatever it is, because we had this JCT committee and I'm just. Understanding like how did we sit here and let all of these things happen and all the onus goes on the city? That's, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Jones. Ms. Rizzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, you know, Ms. Page is right. Systemic racism is exactly what got us here. Decades long of systemic racism. Decades. Right? With should never have even gotten to the point that it is. You know, when that graduation rate started declining the way it did years ago, that should have been a city crisis. Something, someone should have intervened long before then. I think people, mostly people are now aware I did my teaching practicum in George With in nineteen ninety-three. That school was struggling then. You know, this is a moral failure of the entire city, if you ask me. Including the people who disinvested from that school years ago. And so, yeah, this is systemic racism. I certainly would stand up for that. You know, this discussion we're having now. You know, some thirty years after I did my practicum. I'm hoping is an attempt to, to reconcile with that. An attempt to figure out the best way to, to take care of the wounds that that community. Has suffered. And so, you know, I'm looking at this. We know that there were lots of problems with the last three schools, including meeting deadlines, okay? Including staying on track with time. Which everybody is very concerned with. I mean, here we are, you know, a year after the last three schools were still being built and there's still things that are being fixed. We know there are a lot of unanswered questions. You know, people who are doubtful of what is being presented as fact, please research that. I think that there are still a lot of unanswered questions about what happened. With the building, especially of the last three schools. So, you know, I, I appreciate Ms. Dora and your editing of your resolution. I still think the timeline part in terms of when the transfer is going to occur is quite vague. I happen to like the fact that the next resolution talks about resource sharing with the city. Perhaps sharing staff. To support RPS with getting going with building the, the. The capability to build these schools efficiently and effectively. And so I still think that that second resolution is more powerful. And represents a truer attempt at collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzi. I believe that myself and Mrs. Page and Mrs. Dora, we've used up our time. Is there anyone else that wants to speak regarding Mrs. Dora and Mrs. Jones's resolution? Mr. Young, is anyone else?
Madam Chair, I see Ms. White. And I did have you next, Madam Chair, but.
I have utilized my, my six minutes. Thank you, Mr. Young. I have utilized my time. Ms. White, the floor is yours.
Um, you can counsel me, just.
Thank you. Any more discussion, Mr. Young?
No, ma'am.
Colleagues, we can move on to the next proposal. Or Mrs. Dora, you can make a motion, either way.
I believe I did make a motion and I saw a second in the chat.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
That's before you amended the motion, before you amended?
I did not, I did not before I amended, but I'm happy to read the whole thing once again.
So tell me what you're doing. You getting ready to make another motion? Or we're going to address the motion that was on the floor? Are you going to amend the motion?
Sorry.
I can't hear you, dear.
I think as practice, before we voted on a motion, it's maybe not good form, but more efficient. To just amend the existing motion on the table rather than going through a vote to amend and then voting on it. So since we haven't voted on it. My proposal would be that we vote on the full emotion, motion as amended, if that's okay with Ms. Jones.
Would you state that again, please, with your amendment?
Sure. Should I read the whole thing?
Is it in the chat?
It is.
Please read.
Whereas Richmond Public Schools has the goal to ensure that every child is educated in a suited art and safe learning facility. Whereas in twenty eighteen, the Richmond School Board adopted a facilities plan to modernize school facilities. Whereas the twenty eighteen facilities plan prioritized George With to be part of, to be built as part of Phase One. Whereas George With was built in nineteen sixty is rotting in plain sight and posing a safety risk to students and staff. Whereas any delay to the construction of George With is not in the best interest of students, staff, and teachers in the city. Whereas changes to existing school construction practices will result in significant delays. Where it has been widely reported by city procurement and Richmond Public Schools that the only way to ensure a twenty twenty-five opening is to authorize the city of Richmond to issue a request for proposal for design architectural services. In June twenty twenty-one. Whereas on June seventeenth, the city of Richmond issued a RFP for design services. Whereas RPS is invited to participate in the evaluation panel as proposals cannot be distributed to RPS personnel unless they are appointed members of the evaluation panel. Due to confidentiality requirements that are in place after a contract is executed. Whereas the issuance of this RFP does not deny RPS the ability to build its own schools. But rather it gets the process started so that we can build a new George With as soon as possible. Whereas the city of Richmond has agreed to transfer ownership of the RFP. Once RPS has its staff in place to insource school construction. Whereas if RPS declines to participate as voting members of the RPS evaluation panel, the process toward building a new George With will again be debased. Therefore, be it resolved that this board directs the administration to appoint members to join the RFP evaluation panel. And proceed with procurement and partnership with the city for the construction of George With. The school board and the city of Richmond authorizes the RPS administration to join the existing RFP evaluation panel. To, to be comprised of no fewer than seven persons, including no fewer than three city employees and four RPS employees. And no more than nine persons, including no more than four city employees and five RPS employees. To review and score proposals and award a contract for design services of a new George With high school. The aforementioned panel shall include the RPS facilities planner and the RPS directors of facilities. This resolution ensures that schools build schools and that the RFP will be transferred to RPS once we have our procurement staff in place. The timeline for transitioning to schools building schools will be, will be reported out at monthly school board meetings.
Sorry, I was on mute. This motion was seconded by. Ms. Jones, you seconded it again? Hear you.
Second, yes.
It's been moved by Dr., excuse me, Ms. Dora and seconded by Mrs. Jones to receive her resolution as amended. Are you ready to vote? All right, Madam Clerk, please move forward.
Mrs. Dora?
Yes.
Mariah White?
No.
Kenyon Gibson?
No.
Jonathan Young?
No.
Stephanie Rizzi?
No.
Dr. Shonda Harris Mohammed?
No.
Cheryl Burke?
Yes.
Dawn Page?
Yes.
Nicole Jones?
Yes.
Madam, Madam Chair, the motion failed.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I cut you off, Mrs. Clerk.
The motion fails four to seven.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Jones and Mrs. Dora. Again, thank you.
No, four to.
Four.
It's a four to seven, five to four.
Five to four.
Five to four.
Five to four.
Five knows four.
Knows and four, yes.
Correct. Thank you.
All right.
Right? We now will move forward with Mr. Young's proposal. Mr. Young, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, colleagues. I promise to be brief and one to, if it's your pleasure, address any questions at the end, but. I promise to be brief and one to, if it's your pleasure, address any questions at the end, but let me share at the top of my conversation that I concur with the sentiment around the table, more importantly, with the overwhelming sentiment in the community, i.e. it is incumbent on us as a school district to collaborate, to team. There too, I will here, hereafter introduce, formally introduce what constitutes a partnership with the city. Specifically, it will provide for Richmond Public Schools, in concert with the city, to leverage, to share resources, to share staff, i.e. those competencies, the experience, capabilities that RPS may not, may not include in our portfolio. We have the opportunity to do precisely what has been said in the last two hours of discussion, i.e. to borrow from the city and to pay, and to pay the city commensurate with the hours, hours worked. My point is to say that it is incumbent on Richmond Public Schools to team, to collaborate for all the reasons that I'm not going to belabor this evening. But I do want to point out that Georgewith does need to be built as soon as very possible, and Georgewith, in my humble opinion, and I suspect we would all agree, should be built in the most efficient and effective way so that we can maximize the minimum. We can stretch every dollar, because when we do, we provide opportunities for some of our other twenty-four thousand students to be provided new bricks and mortar and to move into brand new, into brand new space. The exciting part of this debate for me is that we have the opportunity to do that. I.e. we have the opportunity to not just open a new Georgewith, but to also open a brand new career and technical high school but eight minutes from Georgewith and to, and to open a new space for Woodville Elementary. The to that end, Madam Chair, though everyone is a receipt of what I'll share next in a written, written way, if I may, I will introduce formally, for the purpose of public who may not have seen the document yet, the school board- thank you, Madam Chair. The School Board of the City of Richmond directs the Richmond Public Schools, or RPS administration, to issue requests for proposals, or RFPs, for design services of, one, a new Georgewith High School to encompass no more than two hundred and sixty thousand total square feet of construction, including athletic facilities to accommodate a capacity of sixteen hundred students. Two, renovation of the building located at twenty-three twenty-five Mari Street to accommodate a career and technical high school. And three, a new or renovated Woodville Elementary School. The RFP relevant to Georgewith shall be issued by August thirty-one, twenty twenty-one, and the RFPs for the current technical high school and Woodville Elementary School shall be issued by October thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. The School Board of the City of Richmond authorizes the Richmond Public Schools, or RPS administration, to assemble and convene an evaluation panel to be comprised of no fewer than seven persons, including no fewer than three city employees and four RPS employees, and no more than nine persons, including no more than four city employees and five RPS employees, to review and score proposals and award a contract for design services of a new Georgewith High School. Therefore, mentioned panel shall include the RPS facilities planner and the RPS director of facilities. The School Board of the City of Richmond authorized Richmond Public Schools, or RPS administration, to solicit with approval from the mayor, any staff or resources to assist on the project, to be provided work release to help with the design and construction of a new Georgewith. Staff shall be compensated by RPS for their hours of service commensurate with what they would be paid on an hourly basis by the city. The School Board of the City of Richmond directs the RPS administration to report to the school board no fewer than two times a month regarding this, regarding the status of construction for the three schools. Madam Chair, I so move.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Rizzi. Motion by Mr. Young to move forward on his proposal. Any questions, discussions? Mr. Young, anyone in the chat?
I see the superintendent and Ms. Dora.
All right, Mr. Superintendent, floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, everyone. And thank you, Mr. Young, for sharing that resolution. I do want to register some significant concerns with the resolution on the part of the administration. Namely, number one, I believe it would be misguided for this body to issue a resolution calling for the construction of Georgewith for a capacity of sixteen hundred students for two reasons. One, the current student body is over thirteen hundred students, and the student body has been increasing on an average by nearly a hundred students per year for the last three years. It suggests that by the time this school would open, it would open overcrowded on day one. I believe strongly we should build the school for two thousand students. While, of course, in a perfect world with unlimited resources, I think we would all agree that smaller high schools are more ideal than larger ones, but in the interests of ensuring preparations for the future and being fiscally responsible, I believe it is very important that we build this school for two thousand students. Otherwise, mark my words, it will open overcrowded, and then this body will be confronted with the challenge of needing to build yet another high school on the South Side. Number two, the timelines in this resolution, while laudable, are not realistic. This body discussed similar timelines, I believe, two board meetings ago, and they were rejected out of an acknowledgement that the administration does not yet have the capacity to execute on this work. This board acknowledged that by approving the creation of three new positions, which we are still working to fill. I will note it has been difficult to fill these positions because qualified candidates have witnessed the back and forth over Georgewith and have determined this would not be the best career move for them at this time. Nonetheless, we are working around the clock to fill these positions so that we are able to execute on the board's wishes, but we are not there yet. And if I were to direct our procurement team and other related personnel to drop everything to meet an August thirty-first deadline, which, mind you, is eight days before the start of school, something will not get done for reopening. It could be related to health and safety, it could be related to academics, it could be related to transportation. But the only way for the administration to execute on that timeline, and frankly, the other two dates outlined for the Career and Technical Center and for Woodville Elementary School, would be for me to direct staff to stop other mission-critical work. I say that not as a threat, but merely as a reality. I am duty-bound to follow the directives of this board, and I will do so, but I feel I am also duty-bound to speak up when I think the board is making a mistake. And I believe this resolution is a mistake that will ultimately impact our ability to reopen school successfully, healthily, safely, and with academic success. Finally, let me just say this. I'm tired of talking about Georgewith. It is extremely important, but there are many other important things that we need to address. We deferred our discussion of a sixty-plus million-dollar literacy initiative to respond to COVID at our last meeting because we spent all of our time talking about Georgewith. And tonight, we have delayed that conversation yet again to spend two more hours to talk about Georgewith. I beg of this body to come to resolution on how to move forward on Georgewith in a reasonable fashion tonight. We simply cannot afford to be distracted by this conversation at this moment in time as we are preparing to reopen coming out of a once-in-a-lifetime crisis. And as we saw at Broad Rock last week, there are many, many issues to be ironed out as we reopen. So again, I beg of you, find a resolution, find one that is reasonable, that recognizes the reality of what we can and cannot do, and one that takes into consideration the community's wishes and the very real nature of the growth on the South Side that will impact Georgewith High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. The next speaker we have is Ms. Dora.
Thanks. I share some of the concerns. I also share some concerns about, well, I don't want to waste any more time. I have three questions for Jonathan, Mr. Young. Have you discussed this with, this proposal with the city, especially given that it's dependent on city staff, and what has there been, what is their feedback around this proposal? Hearing from Mr. Cameron, I think that's very illuminating what his feedback is, since he's will be the people that are actually executing the proposal on the ground. Two, where is the money going to come from for building the two new schools? And how many hours do you think the evaluation staff that we're proposing to pay, and at what rate, what incremental budget impact do you think this will be? And then three, does this proposal make motion of, are we moving forward with construction manager at risk or a design bid build? I believe in a recent public interview, Mr. Young, you talked about being interested in a prototype design. I know other members on the board have been interested in design bid build. Some of those construction techniques will take longer than others, and so curious as to what the thinking is around that. It seems a little vague in the proposal.
Thank you, Ms. Dora. Mr. Young, would you like to answer that now?
Madam Chair, fortuitously, I was up next, so.
All right, go right ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Ms. Dora. But first, I want to address the, a couple of points from the superintendent, and I appreciate the point. First, in regards to capacity, I relied on our experts, specifically our demographics consultant that we hired, and we expended a lot of money on pertinent to rezoning, only in twenty nineteen, i.e. Cropper, and Cropper's numbers indicate that, that we will grow to over fifteen hundred. He was spot on that we would grow. He projected it at Georgewith. He projects that enrollment would, would cap out at sixteen hundred. That's, that's the first point. The second point, as it relates to RPS capacity pertinent to procurement or facilities or fill in the blank, precisely, that is exactly why this, this proposal incorporates teaming with the city, collaborating, and acknowledgement of, Mr. Superintendent, of the, the concerns that you have introduced, including preceding meetings, and precisely the impetus for, for why we would team with, with the city to, to share their, to share their resources, specifically their, their labor, their expertise, their, their human capital. In regards to, in regards to Ms. Dora's questions, I'm gonna, first, the city and staff capability. So, in lieu of what was done in the past round of schools, I would remind everybody that a, a firm, a, a project management firm, the taxpayers spent five point five million dollars on a specific firm to, to do something that, that I'm confident are, are good friends between RPS and the, and the city are most capable of constituting a significant savings to the taxpayers, i.e. allowing us to erect new buildings sooner rather than later. I would also add in regards to inquiry pertaining to money. So, yes, we have, so the last round of schools, so I'll remind, I'm like, I know I don't need to, but perhaps for maybe anybody listening in that don't, don't have, don't have all the numbers. So, in the last round of schools for three schools, we spent five point seven five million dollars relevant to design services, specifically to RRM. And we have dollars that exceed that pertinent to design services. That, those dollars will be supplemented, we all know, with two hundred million dollars in, in, in CLP dollars, capital improvement plan dollars that will provide for the construction of, yes, a new Georgewith, but yes, also new Altra, and if we are prudent and we adopt the approach that I've identified this evening, also a Woodville, Woodville Elementary. In regards to the construction methodology, that's a really terrific question. Yes, yours truly has conveyed my interest in, in a prototype, off-the-shelf design, for lack of better description, because it expedites, expedites the process, one, and because it also will allow us, not unlike what we, what we did with RRM, to, to secure, to secure design at the, the least cost, at the least cost possible. So, Madam Chair, thank you. Probably have another thirty minutes, so that I would like to speak to this matter, but I want to be conscious of my colleague's time, and I do believe the next person is Ms. Rizzi, and then I see Ms. White.
Ms. Rizzi, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not, was I on that list? I didn't, I don't remember signing on to the list. And I don't necessarily want to speak, and I don't have anything at this point to say, so if I'm on the list, that was an error.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzi. Ms. White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say, I heard my colleague was asking questions, but this is just for the design only. And all of the questions that were asked, they are in the RFP. So, I'm not sure if you have read the RFP, but they are in there, what type of everything that you need to see, requesting what type of offer, what type of design is. This is all about collaboration, like I said early, and compromising. So, what I like to say, Mr. Cameras, I heard Mr. Cameras, and I think about us collaborating and collaborating with the city. It doesn't take anything away from your staff as far as getting the schools up. And I heard you say something about Broad Rock. I don't think that had anything to do with what we're collaborating and compromising. Broad Rock, the problem with that is, it was just poor planning, and it needs to be rectified. But tonight is, I saw a lot of specification that Mr. Young did state. He just put in extra stuff into the RFP, and these are the requirements that we are asking the city to come and collaborate and join on so that we can get Georgewith built. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Anyone else, Mr. Young?
Yes, ma'am, in the following order, Ms. Page, then Ms. Gibson, Madam Chair, you to follow Ms. Gibson, and then Ms. Dora.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
Yes, so, thank you. I have a question. So, Mr. Young, you are stating that we can share, share the RFP with the city. Is that what you're stating? In your resolution?
I think he's on mute.
Ma- Madam Chair, gladly, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Page, thank you. We, we would largely leverage the, the city's RFP, but it would constitute a cooperative process. Again, the intent is to say that we can share resources to include Ms. Betty Burrell's shop. She does have most capable, experienced persons in her department, i.e. we would be able to team with them for the purpose of that RFP, not unlike we would be able to team with legal or facilities or minority business enterprise, et cetera.
So, from the last meeting that we had with the city, I think it was a compact meeting, Ms. Burrell clearly stated that legally that we could not share the RFP with the city. So, so I don't, I'm not clear on your resolution if the city said, stated that couple, maybe a month ago, I'm, I'm not even sure. But I live on the South Side. The growth is clearly in the South Side. And the reason why we had such an issue with Broad Rock because we had, yes, we had an influx, influx on population, but also the board at that time made adjustments to the rezoning lines, the boundaries. So, because of those adjustments, of course, Broom became overcrowded. So I'm saying that to say I do not want us to face those issues again. And I just really see this as malfeasance, and I cannot support this.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to note that I am in support of the motion on the table. I am extremely excited that that, you know, not only will we move forward with design development for George with, that we will also move forward with design development of of these other schools, which are important projects for the the board to be taking on. You know, it's not lost on me that we we could have had the design for George with in in hand. There was nothing stopping that process from moving forward in twenty eighteen. And so I, and so I I am thankful that we're doing that now, as well as thinking about those other schools that are that are in the pipeline. I am appreciative that Mr. Cameras has noted that the administration will adhere to the the will of the board if this motion is is adopted. You know, ultimately, there is, I believe, shared belief that 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 no school can wait. The city has said very clearly that we need to, we need to address the the failing buildings within the school district. And we are not able to do that. We cannot live to our word if we continue to to not be smart in in how we're spending these resources. You know, when we think about the amount of money that was spent on on school construction, you know, in in, you know, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, there were millions of dollars that were that were spent unwisely. That has snowballed into the the last three schools. And ultimately, it will continue to happen until there is a majority on the board that's going to say enough is enough. And and I, and I believe that 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 this is where we are. And and I'm very proud to be amongst a group of folks who are not afraid of change and who recognize that that today is the day that that we will finally make good on on our word, which is that, you know, that we will address that the buildings in the district. It is disheartening to hear that, you know, that 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 this is somehow not a priority, that it shouldn't be a priority. The fact of the matter is, is that this board has been elected to oversee the needs of our school district. And and we do not have the privilege or luxury of being able to cherry pick what needs to happen. We need to fix those schools. We need to address George with. We need to address Woodville Elementary School. And and we need to open and reopen wisely. And I would encourage the administration, if there is a consultant that needs to be brought on board, if you need to reconsider how our central office and and cabinet is staffed. I I I am, you know, there was at one point, we had a chief operating officer and a chief finance officer. There was a decision to combine those roles. You know, I think that that might be worth revisiting. If we do not have the support that that we need in order to be do doing this work, which is critical for us to be doing, it is time to revisit, and and the time is now to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. And the next person is Ms. Dora.
It's actually you, Madam Chair, to be followed by Ms. Dora, yes, and then, and then Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Young, for this proposal. I do have two questions as well. And I want to make sure I'm clear on this, because I've read something one place and I'm not sure tonight if I heard that part. Did you state that we would probably follow a photo type? In regarding to, did I hear that in building George with?
Ma- Madam, Madam Chair, that would be, that would be yours truly's preference. But that, to be clear, is, this motion is silent as it relates to that subject. But since you asked Jonathan Young, yes, that would be my my preference, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And my other question, my statement is, be mindful of the timeframe also regarding COVID, because we're not out of the, we're not in the in the clear regarding COVID, which was one of the reasons for not making excuses. But as you know, I don't know whether you were on JCT during that that time that we had to close down three, three or four times due to the outbreak of COVID, as well as getting materials from abroad instead of right here in the United States because of what was going on in COVID. So being mindful of that timeframe, which we'll have to deal with that as given. Then my other piece was going back to what I think Mrs. Page asked, or Mrs. Dora asked, I'm not sure which. But I I wasn't clear on the response. I know you stated that Mrs. Burrell has an ongoing great team with the procurement, but being mindful that the city is doing more than just building schools per se. There are, there are assignments across the board, so to depend upon them to do that. And we haven't discussed that with them. I'd really like to, on my part, would like to hear if they are in a position to do as we we ask. And but we're saying that, if I'm understanding correctly, that we will have the complete say so moving forward. However, we're going to utilize their resources, and then also getting the money moving forward. Where do we get the money? So after George with peace with the other schools. Would you be so kind, or that's just out there?
Madam, Madam Chair, gladly. The mayor has said not once, not twice, not three times, not four times, but probably a hundred and one times that his administration is most willing and capable to partner with us relevant to school construction, and that he would put his entire team at disposal to that end. He articulated as much in the letter to us. As it relates to, as it relates to monies, correct, we have dollars right now for design services. This conversation right now pertains to design services. I would remind my colleagues, last round, altogether, we spent five point seven five million for design services for RRMM. The dollars that that we have access to exceed that, but correct, yes, ma'am. As it relates to construction, if we want to get a little further down the road, as I know we all do, correct, we would, we anticipate because of the appropriation, a big thanks to the mayor, a big thanks to city council, two hundred million dollars in the CIP for the purpose of school construction. Yes, ma'am. I also, I also understand that there's a balance of approximately a three, or at least the last time I looked, a balance of, anticipated balance of probably not three million dollars, probably something less than that pertinent to this last round of schools, i.e. the one fifty that was bonded, contingent on anticipated meals tax revenue, where the equivalent of about nine million dollars a year.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Ms. Dora, I believe you're next, and if no one after Ms. Dora, I ask because it's almost eight thirty, that we go ahead and move into the opportunity to vote. Is there anyone after Ms. Dora, Mr. Young?
Uh, one person, one person, Dr. Harris Mohammed.
All right. Well, then after Dr. Harris Mohammed, if there isn't anyone else, we can move forward with the vote regarding Mr. Young's proposal. Ms. Dora, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Just in response to Ms. White's question to me about why am I asking about things that are in the RFP? Well, I just think we all need to be really clear. Mr. Young's proposal does not say that we're taking the city's RFP. That's not anywhere in this proposal. So that's one of the reasons why I was very explicit that it is important that the city transfer the RFP to us. We still don't have that, I mean, I know we have it, but the city has not officially transferred its RFP to us. And I don't understand how this resolution changes that fact. So I just think we need to like be super duper clear about that, that this, to me, feels like schools building schools. It's a good idea on paper, but it hasn't been thought through, and it hasn't been properly vetted. And we are setting the superintendent up for failure. We are asking now the superintendent to hire a consultant, change his entire central office staff, issue not one, but three new RS, RFPs in forty five, one in forty five days, and change up his whole central office when we are entering school in the most unprecedented of times. And he said to us multiple, multiple, multiple times that we do not have the capacity. I heard in talking with the administration that two senior officers of his cabinet, when we were issuing, we weren't even schools building schools during the last time, that two of our senior chief administrators sat in a room for two weeks reviewing RFP proposals. Is that what we're asking our chief academic officer to do right now? Right when we're about to open schools? And I think it is completely irresponsible to make a decision about the size of a school without talking to the George with community first. So I really, I think this conversation has been super helpful. It would have been really helpful to have had this conversation in April, because there are flags to schools building schools and to this process. We could have worked it out together, because I do believe that everyone really does want to find a solution, but this solution is not it. I hate to say it, and I don't, this is not a win. This is a sad day for RPS if this goes through. This does not change anything to our timeline. It just sets our superintendent up to fail. It continues to take away our time and attention away from what we need to be focused on, which is reopening. And it doesn't change any of the dynamics. And if you think that the city right now is going to somehow magically agree to this proposal after, after this, I think we're delusional. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dora. Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Couple of things, I'm gonna be very quick. I want to be very clear. The the plan of reopening schools should have begun earlier. So this resolution, Ms. Dora's resolution, ABZ resolution does not impact in a negative way of reopening schools. I'm very concerned about that statement. I recall, and I wasn't on the board then, it doesn't really matter now, but I don't, I I recall that the Cropper and Cropper, Cropper and Cropper data numbers, or data, excuse me, that was presented for the high schools, not just on the north side, but also the south side, indicated that George with the growth that would articulate into George with high school would not exceed eighteen hundred students. That is from a pay firm that the school division paid when you went through the last zoning process. I am in total agreement that this cat and mouse chase, it has to end. It, it is, in my opinion, professional opinion, unnecessary. But I want to be utterly clear. I will never commit malfeasance of any cat. I would not put my educational license that I have worked so incredibly hard for to get where I am in my career in thirty years on the line because of anyone, any resolution, anyone's opinion. So I don't want anyone in the public to think that any of us would commit malfeasance, particularly a person on the board with a active standing collegiate professional license. I do not think that we're setting the superintendent up for failure like any other superintendent in the country. They got a multitask, and it's things that they have to do. What I am, what I have heard, and what I am also professionally feeling as a school board member, is that the superintendent doesn't want to do. Okay, that's fine. If the city had the people to collaborate with us under their proposal, I'm not clear on why they wouldn't have the people to collaborate with us now. It just turn, it turns the tape. I also want to be extraordinarily clear that this does not, just like any other thing that we have brought for in any of us, does not fail Richmond City Public Schools. I don't want that message to be, to be let out, because we don't agree on how to move forward. We have constantly stated, constantly stated, and I take that very personally. We have constantly stated not to attack each other's integrity, character, don't tack my license that I've worked so hard for. Don't do that, because I am not failing Richmond City Public Schools. I don't expect any of us to say that again, because that is an integrity attack. And I'm not going to sit here and let that go and have my license on the line because somebody made a false or biased statement because I don't agree with someone or a group of people that I have failed this for thirteen years. Thirteen, more than thirteen years, I have served this community, not just in the sixth district, but the entire city with my service.
Thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed. Point well taken. Thank you. Thank you. Is that it, Mr. Young? We're ready to vote?
Madam Chair, not quite yet.
Who was that?
Yes, the the superintendent requested.
Yes, superintendent Cameras.
To be followed by Ms. Page, Madam Chair. Yes, ma'am.
Superintendent Cameras, please proceed, followed by Ms. Page. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to reiterate one point that I I I believe is concerning, and that is, as part of this resolution, it goes beyond the nature of any potential partnership with the city. It actually makes a very important design decision about the school. It determines its size. This body has solicited no input whatsoever from the community about that very question. And we are poised to make that decision again without public input. And I I understand if the board wants to proceed in this partnership with the city as defined by Mr. Young's resolution. However, I think it would be unfair to the community to make a design decision as significant as the size of the school without ever posing that question to the community and without getting a single piece of feedback about that very important question, which is going to impact the children and staff of the with community likely for the next half century or more. And so my request, while I don't support the resolution overall, I am particularly concerned that this body is about to make a design decision without any input from the individuals, students or staff, that it is going to affect.
Thank you, Mr. Cameras. Ms. Page?
Um, Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't have anything else to say, because we we want to move forward one way or the other, and I just think we're being unrealistic, and we just need to move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
Yeah.
There's no other discussion?
That.
I'm sorry, yes.
We need to refrain from attacking one another, because we all have educational experiences. We all have license that, um, no one wants to jeopardize. So we need to refrain from the personal attacks, because we are a board, and we are here to work together on behalf of the students and families and the staff that we serve in Richmond Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page. We're ready to vote. If there's no other discussion. Mr. Young, is anyone else last call?
Madam Chair, two per.
I see Ms. Rizzi waving her hand. Was Ms. Rizzi?
Ms. Rizzi and then Ms. White. Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Rizzi, followed by Ms. White?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. So my question is with the mayor's RFP. I I think I'll direct this to Mr. Cameras, if I'm able to. Was there a community input on his numbers on the RFP that was issued?
My understanding is the RFP that, if you, if I may, Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
My understanding is the RFP that was issued assumed a two thousand student George with, which has always been the assumption based upon the work that we have done with George with in the past, even back to several years ago. So that was moving forward with what was the established objective in terms of building a new school to accommodate the growing population on the south side. Sixteen hundred is a deviation from that.
Okay, so yeah, I would like to see some evidence that a study was done and that that number is more than just an assumption. And you know, the the fact is, you're basing your argument, however, on whether there was community engagement, and you have not answered that there was any for that two thousand number.
If I may, my my argument about the size is 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 based in data. If, if I may share my screen. Madam Chair. We have not yet gotten to this presentation. I'm not sure if we're going to do it tonight, but.
Oh, that was listed for tonight as well. Thank you.
But as you can see, over the last four years, we've increased by almost a hundred students per year. We're now at over thirteen hundred. It stands to reason that that would continue if the school were built even under the speediest of circumstances. Um, if the school were built, um, even under the speediest of circumstances over three years, uh, we should expect to be at sixteen hundred three years from now. And that is why I have, um, significant concerns, um, about that number.
Uh, point taken. Again, though, it, it has nothing to do with community engagement and that was my question. Um, and I still would like to see, you know, some scientific, some more scientific predictions that those numbers will be increased, you know, um, at that rate every single year. Um, and I'd like to also know what Cropper was basing its, uh, predictions on, its projections. And then, um, yeah, I think that's, that's where I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm finished with questions. I look forward to collaborating with the city. I'm, I'm hoping that, that they see this as an offer of collaboration and of cooperation. And I'm just really excited to hear more from the community about specifics, about what they like to see in the school, even if we go with a prototype. From what I understand, prototypes can be, um, adjusted to reflect what community members want to see. So I'm really just excited, you know, we will get done with this tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzi, and then it was Ms. White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not going to, um, repeat what Ms. Rizzi said about what she did, asked one of my questions. Um, I just want to clarify the understanding I heard Ms. White, what Ms. Door has said. My question was what section of the RFP would your resolution impact? That's all I wanted to know because I, it's three paragraphs of this RFP. And I was actually reviewing them when you were doing, when you were actually going over your resolution. And I couldn't see where they were impacted until you sort of, uh, added in Mr. Young's, um, his resolution. Then it became impact on this RFP. And, uh, based on numbers, um, I don't see what numbers, uh, based on the collaboration should change the collaboration with the city of the school board. If that is a problem with numbers, then there should be a feasibility, uh, study done. If that is, uh, what we're going after, just a number based on collaboration. But tonight I'm ready to collaborate with the city and the school board and, uh, put this design into action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young, is that it?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay. All right, well, we're now ready to vote. It was moved by Mr. Young and who seconded, Mr.? I don't recall who seconded your motion. Thank you, Mr. Young made the motion to accept his proposal, seconded by Ms. Rizzi. Are you ready to vote? Be no discussion moving forward. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
District one, Elizabeth Door.
No.
District two, Mariah White.
Yes.
District three, Kendra Gibson.
Yes.
District four, Jonathan Young.
Hi.
District five, Stephanie Rizzi.
Yes.
District six, Sandra Harris Mohammed.
Yes.
District seven, Cheryl Burke.
No.
District eight, Dawn Page.
No.
District nine, Nicole Jones.
No.
All right, give me a minute.
Five, four.
Four, the motion.
Thank you very much. All right, colleagues, Mr. Um, Young's proposal has been approved. Moving forward now, we have, we decided to move eight point two up and that is receive an update on the MOU with from, with Virginia State Department of Education. Normally that's, um, something that we read on our own, however, it was asked that we move that up to discuss. So, Mr. Camus, would you be so kind to move forward on that? And you all, I do hope have had a chance to read the letter, the report, which is given to all schools that are under MOU. We've done a lot of work and we have a lot of work to do. So, um, Mr. Camus, would you be so kind to address that and then we'll have questions moving forward?
Madam Chair, I wasn't prepared to do a presentation since it was in other information. I'm glad to answer any questions that board members have.
All right, because the MOU is attached there as well, I believe. Okey dokey. All right, um, regarding that, are there any questions of Mr. Camus? Mr. Young, excuse me.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Dr. Harris Mohammed, the floor is yours.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Chair. I really appreciate the information submitted to us, um, from the Office of School Quality concerning the cap. Um, I, I really do appreciate the detailed information that they use that cap, our corrective action plan to leave us some bullets. I have a few, um, points. I mean, I am concerned about a lot of the information that they shared with us, which I think, um, leaves an area for strength, leaves an area for growth, but it also highlighted, uh, many weaknesses that I recall during board members asking about. Uh, one of them is, um, the merit of artifacts regarding instructional data, um, that our school division has submitted. I really do appreciate the information that they have sent on a continued basis to the Office of School Quality. However, they made it very clear, they being the Office of School Quality was unable to determine an upward trend in RPS student achievement. However, during our March school board meeting, our April school board meeting, our May school board meeting, um, there were presentations that indicated that they were using during the presentations, information that led me to believe as a school board member, that was the information that was shared with the Office of School Quality. So there must be a misalignment of communication because the information that was presented to us apparently didn't make to the Office of School Quality. I'm not sure. Teachers through the, um, public comment stressed to us, many of them stressed to us about the misalignment of the new curriculum that was, they appeared in their professional opinion, rushed to a judgment and there was no evidence to indicate if there was validity and fidelity behind the curriculum that was adopted. One in particular, the new ELA curriculum. The limited number of students, this is number three. The limited number of students completing their SOL assessments, not benchmark assessments, not teacher made assessments, SOL assessments. I myself, um, spoke with the superintendent on numerous occasions with comments and remarks and informations that teachers and guidance counselors, um, had submitted to me about testing at a variety of schools. One, a young man at Hughdonut High School was told he couldn't use the graphic calculator to take an assessment, but another child was. That concerns me. Four, student and teachers vehemently complained about the lack of preparation for testing. Bus information, which let me be clear, is not on the bus depot. Communication was not the same for every school site that was open for testing. Everything that I asked about and is coming full circle at that the Office of School Quality noted, I was asking about those in a variety of school board meetings. And I just want to point that out. We're always, well, I just want to point that out, um, that I have some serious concerns about that. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other discussion, Mr. Um, Mr. Young, anybody else?
No, ma'am.
Are there any other questions regarding the MOU?
Madam Chair, uh, Ms. Gibson.
Ms. Gibson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. I, I, I would just like to, um, uh, Mr. Camus, if you could just speak to the, the concerns highlighted in the letter um, and, and what the response is going to be, that some of the things that, um, you know, I, uh, you know, gave me some pause was, you know, their note about the new curriculum and the, and the impact that that had had on, on student achievement. Um, but, you know, I'm, I'm eager to hear, you know, next steps in terms of the transcript, next step in terms of graduation. Um, you know, what, how are we moving forward on, on some of these things?
Mr. Camus?
Um, sure, I, 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 so just a couple of thoughts. Uh, I, I think some of the characterizations about what the letter is saying aren't exactly accurate. Um, you know, I've been very direct with this board when we shared data. Scores are down. They are down. Um, we had a lengthy discussion about the literacy crisis we're facing, which is why uh, we are proposing to address it with our federal stimulus dollars. So, um, that should not be, um, anything new, uh, for the board to, uh, to know about. Um, you know, as for responses to everything in the letter, I'm happy to do a longer presentation at our next meeting, but, um, I think it would take quite some time to talk through each and every aspect of that. And, um, that wasn't something that we had planned to do tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Camus, Mr. Young, anyone else listed?
Madam Chair, no, no, ma'am.
All right, there's no other discussion. We will move up to item number three, Dreams for RPS Update, three point zero one, Dreams for RPS Go to Graduation. Is that Ms. Dr. Epp?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Madam Chair. Floor is yours.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board Members. Um, Mr. Camus, would you like to share your screen or would you like me to do so? Thank you. Um, this is an update on goal two in particular. I want to speak to our summer school programming since we recently provided graduation data update. Um, a few headlines here. Uh, we've summarized the number of high school students enrolled in summer school. Our target was a thousand and, uh, we are just shy of that target. So we're very excited about the enrollment, um, and the number of students within that, uh, that are on track to graduate this summer. Uh, you'll see of the hundred and six twelfth graders, um, uh, just over eighty students are on track to graduate this summer. Uh, we'll go to the next slide. Uh, what we offered, just to make sure folks are aware, we offered five different, or are offering currently five different paths for students in high school this summer to assist in credit. Um, so for seniors, there's a select group of students who are eligible for initial credit, um, and or credit recovery. Uh, whereas the, our ninth through eleventh graders, as well as eighth graders who had taken high school courses, are eligible for credit recovery. Um, and we have a limit on the number of students, uh, courses students can take so that we know they can go deep enough within the time allotted. We are also offering, uh, uniquely to meet graduation requirements for any ninth through twelfth grade student online PE and driver's education for initial credit. And we will add, uh, we do offer behind the wheel training for an additional fee, whereas the coursework is offered for, uh, no fee. We offer an SOL Academy for high school students who require verified credits, um, to graduate and who have struggled there. And then lastly, in August, we will offer a final week, a sprint, if you will, where we will support any high school student, um, any ninth through eleventh grader who still, uh, needs to complete their modules from the COVID closure in twenty twenty. Um, so we are giving students many opportunities to earn credit to stay on track to graduate. In terms of our projected graduation numbers and dropout rates, those numbers are continuing to trend a, as we've reported to this body. And I am happy to take any questions.
Thank you, thank you so much. Are there any questions recall according to Dr. Epp's presentation?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Page to be followed by Ms. Rizzi.
All right, Ms. Page, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Epp, for, um, this presentation, but I do have a question. So the on track graduates by program, so I noticed the success center has only one. Um, can you explain or do you know what may, the low number, what is the, what has attributed to that?
So, yes, ma'am, the, um, the secondary success center, to recap, is for students who have previously dropped out and we've recovered and they are, are, they have a small number of credits to, uh, to earn to graduate. We graduated a number of students who were in our program already between this winter and this past spring. So, um, and we've recovered so many students and gotten them in various programs. So we simply do not have, um, the, the number of eligible students, uh, that are enrolled in that program. Um, uh, we've, we've worked them through the program. So as we do dropout recovery now through the summer and into next fall, we will see that program enrollment go up again.
Okay.
Um, so that really just reflects frankly, the success we've had, um, not a concern. Uh, but we can certainly, um, update you on enrollment numbers, but we expect that enrollment, um, to go back up uh, as we get closer to the start of the school year. And we have students who have not, who do not show up, um, on day one.
Okay, thank you, that, and that makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes, thank you, Ms. Rizzi.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, and thank you, Dr. Epp. Um, I, uh, you're saying that the numbers are, and I appreciate that they're projecting where, um, you're predicting them to be. Do you have any idea when we will get our final numbers on that?
Uh, so, thank you. We get, we get official numbers from the state in September. Um, we have summer school graduation at the end of this month. So we will be able in early August to run our final numbers. Of course, uh, you know, ultimately this, we submit data to the state, the state validates that and scrubs that information. Um, but, but our projections, um, over the last couple of years have been pretty accurate. So we'll have an internal final projection by August and we'll have state, final state numbers in Sept, late September typically.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, are there any other questions, comments?
Madam, Madam Chair, I believe I'm next and I do have a comment. I just wanted to take a moment to commend Dr. Epp, uh, the superintendent, uh, the entire team because we identified a very ambitious goal, arguably a stretch goal relevant to enrollment in summer school this year. I'm referring to all grades, not just, not just for folks that, uh, are subject to conversation this evening. But my point is to say that, uh, I understand we have approximately four thousand students, uh, enrolled in, in summer school. If, if those numbers are correct, please, uh, advise if I speak erroneously, uh, Tracy. But, um, I further understand if that number is approximately correct, that that constitutes a contemporary high. Uh, so, uh, I think we would be most remiss to not, uh, convey our gratitude to the entire team, um, including the aforementioned, um, superintendent and our chief academic officer.
Thank you, Mr. Young, uh, for pre K eight. Uh, after our first week, our attendance is at about thirty six hundred. And for high school, we're at about eight fifty, so well over four thousand. Our target pre K twelve was five thousand, so we're right in line. And, uh, for comparison sake, I think our high watermark in the past has been at most, uh, twelve hundred, um, but usually hovers around eight fifty to a thousand students total. So we're very proud of the outreach our schools and, uh, team did to, uh, to get kiddos, uh, in the door. Thank you.
Dr. Epp and her kiddos. All right, is there anyone else, Mr. Young?
No, ma'am.
Again, thank you, Dr. Epp, and we look forward to upcoming graduation and all there is to come henceforth. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Administration business, we finally get to four point zero one, receive an update on Fall twenty twenty one reopening. Thank you, please move forward. Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have, um, uploaded, as is our practice, our reopening dashboard, uh, for the board to, uh, review. We've also, uh, included, uh, health and safety guidance, which continues to evolve. I do want to note, the American Pediatric Association, uh, just recently came out with guidance, uh, suggesting that all children two years and older wear masks at school this fall, uh, regardless of vaccination status. That is our current recommendation and that will remain our recommendation. So I know there have been lots of questions in the community about that. but I did want to clearly state, we will continue with masks. I also want to reiterate, that is not just for kids, that is for adults as well at all times. The expectation is anybody on RPS property is wearing a mask. So please, to family members, members of the public, anyone involved in any way, shape, or form with RPS, please continue to wear your mask with the Delta variant continuing to really explode in terms of infection rates. We want to make sure we do everything we can to keep the community safe and healthy. We also have on board docs, some additional information about some of the engagement activities, and if I could ask Dr. Harris to say a few words about perhaps Summer Fest and the parade we have coming up, so that everybody knows about those items.
Thank you, Dr. Harris, good to see you.
Good to see you, Chairwoman Burke, Vice Chair Young, Superintendent Cameras, School Board Members. It's my pleasure to just share our excitement with all the many engagement opportunities we've been doing this summer. As you know, our family liaisons, as well as engagement staff, are out in the communities, meeting families where they are, doing community walks, community corners, really partnering with all of our community members, but we are excited this summer to launch our first RPS Summer Fest. This will be an opportunity for families to come out. There is free food, our enrollment team is there if you need to enroll in RPS, if you need to return technology. We've partnered with our Richmond City Health, we will have COVID vaccinations if anyone needs one. Dr. Harris Mohammed, I borrowed from your book, we will have Kamal doing line dancing, and tons of activities that will be present and games. Fire Department will be out there with the splash pad. Needless to say, it is going to be fun. We want all of our Richmond Public Schools families to come out, get some food, and really, we are excited to reopen, and we just want to share that excitement and make sure you are ready. So we will have that this Saturday at MLK will be our first one. And then the following Saturday on the 31st, we'll be at Broad Rock Sports Complex. And then in August, right before we go back to school, we want you to save the date, everyone, August 21st, we will be doing RPS Love Parade, where we invite our families, our communities, everyone to come out and just show that we are ready, we are thankful to get through this year, but we are even more ready to come back. So we will be marching with love, and then we will end up at our, I will save the details for later, but save the date, August 21st, for our RPS Love Parade, more information coming. Thank you, Superintendent Cameras.
May I ask, please, what's the date again for the Love Parade?
August 21st, and we will share more details soon, but this Saturday at MLK, please join us for the first RPS Summer Fest.
Looking forward to it, and again, thank you, Dr. Harris, for all the work that your department continues to do. It's, it's been quite refreshing seeing people knocking on doors, talking with our students and others. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Please extend that on behalf of the board members, if I may. All right, if there are any other questions about the F, well done, as always, we can move.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Someone else, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Door, and then Ms. White.
Ms. Door, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, thank you for these presentations. I have a couple of questions. One, I wanted to get an update on where we are with after-school programming. Our parents are eager, at least my parents are eager, to have an update on the commitment to provide accessible and free aftercare for our students, and there's been a little bit of confusion, I think, so it would be great to just understand where we are and when we can expect to get a communication out to parents, so that they can plan for their aftercare, especially given the new start times. Too grateful to Dr. Harris for including vaccination as part of your community events, at least from my casual conversations around town. I think that the child vaccinations 12 and up is going to be even a harder sell than it is for adult vaccinations, and so I'm wondering what we're doing specifically to educate our families about the benefits of vaccines and any potential partnerships that we may have with the Health Department, et cetera. I'd love for us to make that a really explicit focus. And I had a third question, but I can't remember, so I'll stop there.
If it comes back to you, I think you still have some minutes left. All right, Ms. White, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I have a couple of questions also, and it's on dealing with the fall opening. And it's great that we're going to have a Summer Fest. Thank you, Dr. Harris, for that. But my question is, for the fall opening, are we still short of bus drivers? My other question is, what do we have planned for the mental health and well-being of our students? And I'd like to know about how many instructional interventions do we have for middle school as well as high school? And I did hear Ms. Door say something about the shots, I'm not going to repeat that, but I'd like to know. Have we educated the parents that I believe seven graders and 12 graders have to actually take vaccinations? And I'm not talking about the COVID vaccinations. And my reason for this is, we set up logistically in all the schools. I know that it seemed to be summer school, we did have some problems, and we still does, and it's logistically. And hopefully, those problems can be fixed over at Broad Rock, because they still have some logistics problems. If people are not aware of it, these teachers need cleaning supplies in their classroom. We're still an epidemic, and COVID is out there. So there is no reason why you shouldn't have supplies over there. And those hand machines, but the sanitizer only squirts out a little drop. Who is responsible for filling up those machines? We need to take full responsibility in ensuring that our children are covered at every angle, especially in cleaning supplies. And we need to make sure, I know that the answer was that it's on order, that we have purchased them, but we have summer school going on, and this is unacceptable. And I don't want it to happen in fall opening, where we are short of some type of supplies logistically, because that makes it only poor planning for us. And we shouldn't sit here as a school board and think everything's acceptable. We have a lot of kids in our school, four or five schools and one school. So if we got these kids, we need to ensure that our students are safe at all times. And if you want to answer that, I'm willing to listen, Dr. Epp, sorry for my dog barking, I guess he agree.
We can gather up responses to all of these questions. I do want to note, there is no shortage of cleaning supplies at Broad Rock, that is 100% not true. So if there is a particular concern from a particular teacher, please have them reach out to me directly, but I have personally been at Broad Rock. I was there today and can vouch for the fact that the supplies are there. That is not the issue at Broad Rock. We did certainly have a lot of families that drove their kids, a lot of kids on the bus, and so the logistics on day one needed to be ironed out. I certainly concede as much, and that is something that the team is working on. But I want to be absolutely clear, cleaning supplies is not an issue. If any teacher does have a concern, please reach out to me directly, so that we can make sure your concern is addressed. Thank you.
But, Mr. Cameras, can you answer my question? Do you have enough bus drivers for the fall reopening?
As of today, we do not, but we will when we reopen.
Thank you, Mr. Young, anyone else?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Page.
Ms. Page, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, and Superintendent Cameras, thank you for providing that feedback regarding supplies at Broad Rock, because I have personally visited each one of my schools in my district, so I thank you for that information. That's very helpful, and if there are any teachers that Ms. White is referring to, to reach out to you, but I appreciate that information.
Thank you, anyone else, Mr. Young?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you so very much to the administration for the update on Fall 2021. Now we're ready to move forward to receive an update on Division Literacy Strategy. Yes, the meat of RPS.
Thank you again, Madam Chair, and good evening again, School Board Members. As Mr. Cameras referenced earlier in our meeting, when we shared our pals' data with this board in late winter, I think it was very clear that we have a literacy crisis. I want to be clear that this is not new to our time here in RPS. However, I do think COVID has exacerbated this need. However, the, the data around student achievement and literacy has been a priority since the, the finalizing of our strategic plan. It's, literacy comprises many of the actions and commitments outlined in our Priority One around engaging and rigorous teaching and learning. So I want to underscore that that this challenge remains. In fact, when we look at the data, I've, I've included just a few snapshots here. I won't go through the specific data points, but you can get a sense for our urgency here. We, in concert with the community, community partners, experts, teachers, school leaders, curriculum instruction leads, over the last two years, as part of our Dreams for RPS, we have been working on a literacy plan, and the community and folks can visit our website for the full comprehensive literacy plan for purposes of the evening, and as we look to the upcoming school year and how we come out of COVID, there are six particular big bets we want to make to accomplish four big goals around literacy. Particularly when we received our, the amount of funding we would get from the COVID stimulus and the American Relief Act, we knew that this was a once-in-a-lifetime chance to put everything we have behind resources. And so, over the past several months, looking at our literacy plan, as well as talking with principals, teachers, national experts, and the leadership team, we've outlined six big bets that should drive how we spend a large portion of our federal stimulus dollars to truly attack the literacy challenge that we face, because if our students are not prepared to read and write and analyze text and be critical thinkers and communicators, pretty much nothing else we do matters. So this is the foundation for everything. And so to that end, we've outlined six big pieces that we want to use to tackle this challenge. If we can go to the next slide, I'll just voice over a couple of examples. Given the depth here, I'm not going to read this word for word, but most importantly, we have to maximize the time we have in school, and that means working with schools to, and teachers to ensure the literacy instruction, both our core tier-one instruction, as well as interventions and leveled support, is, has the right staff for small group instruction, has all the resources, and that we are able to make sure that that is high quality. This is the core work of schools, and we need to make sure that, and support school leaders in supporting teachers and keeping focus on daily literacy instruction and keeping it safe. There are some samples about how we'll do that. The second is, we need more time. There is no replacement for more time, particularly with, when supporting students who struggle to read on grade level. Time is a variable that we can adjust, it does not have to be a fixed, a fixed number. And so we are going big on extended day and ensuring that extended day is available to all pre-K five students with an emphasis on literacy and enrichment, because we know that that also can accelerate literacy growth. So we will be launching that this year. The third is, we need to ensure that what our teachers receive in terms of professional development is evidence-based, and that we are building the expertise of our teachers and our school leaders in the science of reading. There, it is known, we, we are at a place in brain science where we know what it takes to help a struggling reader become a proficient reader. Unfortunately, that research is not always current or reflective of how we learned to teach when we became teachers. And so we have to ensure every single elementary teacher knows the science of reading and how we move the needle on, on reading achievement. And so here, there are some ways that we'll do that. Fourth, we need to foster the joy of reading. So if you've ever worked with a struggling reader, or you've been a struggling reader yourself, you know that reading can be a source of anxiety, a source of frustration, and a source of tears. Whereas if you're, if you're a reader, you know that reading can unlock a world of exploration and imagination and excitement. We need to ensure that it does the latter, and for our students who need support, that it feels joyful and loving and supportive and not laborious. Now it takes hard work, but we need to balance that with all the fun stuff. Next, we need to go all in on inclusivity. We need to ensure that our students see themselves in curricula, in texts. They need to see adults who are artists that reflect, that are authors, that reflect their background. We need to do literacy campaigns that celebrate the diverse voices. We certainly honor some of the canon, and when you look at some of, you know, we want to make sure our students have access to classical texts, but we also want to make sure that our students are exposed to a range of texts that tell them they to belong in literature. And then lastly, we can only solve a challenge of this magnitude by involving the entire city of Richmond. We are blessed to have so many community members and volunteers and organizations that want to help and come to us and say, what can we do? And what we want to say to you is, we need you focused on literacy. Everything we do needs to come back to literacy. And so we believe that if we, as a city, as RVA, really work together to ensure every single child can read, then there, then we can tackle this and create really a path for success for our students, so that they do feel successful in school and do not have the challenge of struggling, being a struggling reader. I could talk all evening about this, so I'm going to pause. There's a lot more detail in the deck to give you more examples of what we mean by each of these. What I will say is, to pull this off, it is directly aligned to utilizing the funding in our, in our federal stimulus dollars, which Mr. Cameras will present later, just to connect those dots.
Thank you, Dr. Epp. Mr. Young, do we have any questions or comments? Want to hear that energy, literacy, this is the meat. Who do we have?
Yes, yes, ma'am, it's, they're, they're coming in fast and furious, I think I was.
That's excellent.
Yes, ma'am, I was Johnny on the spot, so I will be very brief and yield the balance of my time to our colleagues, but I just want to share, I, I'm really excited about, one, how Dr. Epp characterizes this initiative as all in, and the most important, relevant to this conversation, he included on page two. And I would direct all my colleagues and/or any persons watching this evening to, this, this is so important, I, I just think we need to, we need to cite it. Students living in poverty and not reading proficient, proficiently in third grade are 1,200 percent more likely to not graduate from high school by age 19. So, so my point is to be brief and to say, I'm terribly sorry that it took a pandemic for, for our community, i.e. Richmond, the great Richmond area, to recognize that we do need all hands on deck to address this crisis. But I am most enthusiastic about what, what Dr. Epp has presented and and what we will review in a moment, relevant to allocating dollars thereto. Madam Chair, with that, and Ms. Madam Chair, with that, Ms. Rizzi is next.
Ms. Rizzi, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, thank you, Dr. Epp. I'm all about reading, you know, I love reading. I have taught reading and I, you know, I'm an English teacher by trade. And so this is exciting that we're emphasizing this now. I noticed that the data you present or you lead with is from 2019. Is there any more recent data to like, share with the public on this one?
Thank you, Ms. Rosie. The first bullet around pals is current data. The next two are based on S O L data. And we just, given COVID, do not have comprehensive S O L data since 2019. And, and that's true for any school district.
Okay.
I wish I did.
Well, yeah, yeah, I mean, that would be nice, but, I mean, certainly, we don't want to minimize that this is a concern. The community organizations you talk about partnering with, and I'm glad to see Parks and Rec, which I think, you know, is really underutilized by R P S in a lot of ways, just from having family and friends who work for Parks and Rec. You know, it just seems they're kind of underutilized. I don't see anything about the public libraries. Have you like partnered with them in the past? Or do you plan to engage them?
Yes. So I know a representative from the public libraries was on our committee to develop the literacy plan. And we certainly have worked with the public libraries in the past. This is not an exhaustive list, so I can make sure that, I'm certain that it's in our literacy plan and the detailed plan. But I will, I will take that feedback and make sure that's incorporated.
And then, you know, yeah, I was wondering too about specific plans for engaging families so that this could be made an immersive experience. I'm sure that this is going to be teaching reading across the curriculum, right? And not just in reading classes. But are there any specific plans for like making this immersive?
Yes. So a few, a few early, a few examples. And I'm, I appreciate the immersive focus. So one is family literacy nights at each school, both in the fall and the spring that, that is really kind of like work sessions to help families learn different strategies for how to make reading fun, how to encourage reluctant readers at home, strategies you can use to just accelerate vocabulary, things like that, of that nature. So we'll partner with our family engagement office to design and advertise and provide those at the school level. And then additionally, working on tools and videos, very easy clips and one pagers to help families understand their child's current reading status and what they need. So when, you know, we've all, I think many of us, if you've received a data report or you get a report card, you don't always know what that actually means. Even as educators, sometimes it's a little, you know, cumbersome to interpret data reports, like a pals report, for example. And so we're working on one pagers for families and then clips for little videos to help explain, you know, if your child's a first grader, here are things to look for. And this is what this means for your child in particular, and very family or layman-friendly language. So those are two specific examples that we have planned thus far.
Sorry.
Last comment. Oh, you had something. Go ahead, Dr. Harris.
Sorry, Ms. Dr. Epp, Ms. Rizzi, I was also just going to add that all of our community partnerships also, our, our focus is literacy-based. So our focus with all community partnerships is helping to build family home libraries as well as our book vending machines. So just wanted to make sure that that was noted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harris.
Yeah, thank you. And yeah, my last comment is that it's kind of high ti- time for the canon to be revised.
Yes. I concur.
Thank you. Anyone else, Mr. Young?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. White, then Ms. Page and Ms. Gibson.
Ms. White, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Epp, I have two questions. The first question is, those book machines that earn, you have to put a token in to buy, you earn a token. Will they have diversity, diversity books inside the machine?
Yes, thank you, Ms. White. Absolutely. In fact, our list of what goes in those machines has been curated by our librarians and our media specialists with a particular lens on inclusivity and diverse characters, authors, and storylines. So absolutely. And one of the things we're working with Dr. Harris's office is when communities want to support, you know, they want to donate books and things of that nature, we are providing them a list of the books we want. So for example, communities and schools was arranging to get a lot of books. And they called me and said, what books? Do you have a book list? And so we, we do have a list of books that reflect the inclusivity piece.
And my next question is, you said you're focusing on literacy and reading and writing comes together. So what are the specifics that you have for writing? Are there going to be some extra writing classes? Are there going to be tutors on how to, you know, get children to write? Because if they're behind in reading, mostly the time they are behind in writing. So as they go into high school, they will have to know how to write. So how would you build that on to the reading part?
Yes, ma'am. So the Virginia E L A standards incorporate reading, writing, and communication, including verbal communication. And so those standards are woven into the curriculum every day. And I would say our curriculum in particular, so historically, you might have seen, we do reading and then we do writing. But that is not the direction that the standards require. And so our curriculum is heavily grounded in writing. So students should be writing a lot every day. So one, just our curriculum in general requires a lot of writing as part of the reading curriculum. The second is, we need to make sure, and we've talked with, we have what's called these unit-based assessments or end-of-module assessments are heavy on a writing task. And so students get us, like, we have a end of every, at the end of every unit, students have to, you know, really formally communicate in writing and then get, you know, scored and graded. So that instruction is happening during the E L A block. The short answer is, it's really integrated in a way that historically we tried to separate, or maybe it was only, it was more heavily emphasized and tested grades. Our expectation to schools is, we teach reading and writing together and as part of every grade, not just grades where writing is tested.
So if there is a lack of in writing, how, what would that, what, what does it look like? Does that student get a one-on-one tutoring with writing? Because I'm sure if the teacher has quite a few students in the school, she would not, or, you know, based on where they are, where they're at at the moment, who would actually, what is the plan? I should say, if a child does need help in writing, or several students need help in writing.
Well, if it's, if it's a, you know, a law, if it's a kind of general trend in the classroom, we encourage and want teachers to respond to student work regularly. So if, if students have an assignment and the teacher notices this is a pattern, we want the teacher to do a mini lesson on, hey, here's what I noticed in your work. Let's, let me do a quick lesson on how to, how to write a proper introductory paragraph, for example. So that, and if that were a standard for that grade level, we would want teachers to do that. If it's an individual student, I would imagine that would be something we would support and encourage to happen, particularly during after-school, extended day, or during the intervention block. So our elementary schools have a dedicated intervention block that is for reading or E L A, really, with an emphasis on reading. But if a student is only struggling with writing and less so with reading, they could, they would be in a group for writing support in particular. At the middle school or high school level, if a student needs additional support in writing, they would get that during one of the, we offer two different foundational literacy courses in middle school as one of their electives, as well as in high school. And so a student would enroll in that course if they needed additional writing support.
Thank you, Dr. Epp.
Thank you.
Ms. Page?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Epp, for this information. And yes, literacy is also important. But I have a comment and a question.
You're on mute, Ms. Page. You hit your mute button. Ms. Page?
I'm sorry.
Start over. No problem. Start over, please.
So I'm not sure what you didn't hear or heard, but anyway, thank you for this presentation, because we all know literacy is also important, especially in the early years, because if you have, you know, that solid foundation, it's just set, sets you, sets you up for success. But I see that quote, where we talk about students living in poverty and not reading proficiency in the third grade. We oftentimes use that as an excuse. And I see it as an opportunity for everyone involved. So my question to you, what can this board do to to promote this initiative? You know, what can, what can we do or how can we help as a board?
How can you help as a board? It's a wonderful question that you always want to get when you're talking about literacy. I, I think the most important thing is to ensure we are putting our resources to our greatest need. We've made a lot of investments in, you know, various aspects related to teaching and learning, which I'm very, we're grateful for and proud of. And we need to continue to make investments in things that directly touch students as it relates to reading support. I think the second is change can, can always be, change takes, also takes time. And so I think just continuing to try to find the right balance of pushing, asking questions, holding us accountable, with also allowing time for things to work. You cannot, there, you know, students at this level, you know, if a third grader, if, if, if half of our third graders are, have not been prepared to read on grade level, that did not happen in one, two, or three years. That goes to how are we supporting investments in early childhood? But, you know, all of those things. And, and then again, just continuing to support us on more time. More time is the variable. And we know the research is out there on what will work. We just have to really have this mindset of, we're going to push and do whatever it takes, even if and when it feels a little uncomfortable. So I, I don't know if that's the best answer, but that's my off-the-cuff answer.
Okay, so a follow-up question. Our pre-K enrollment, do we have the numbers yet for our pre-K enrollment? And because I know when we had, Ms. Jones and I had our eighth and ninth district meeting, we had our pre-K representatives from Summer Hill and Blackwell attended to see, you know, so their parents could register their child. So do we have the number, number for enrollment for our pre-K yet?
I can get you the current update. Enrollment for early childhood, for pre-K is a rolling basis. As you know, there, it's eligibility-based, and so it requires reviewing eligibility, assigning them to the right school, et cetera. But that is what the team is 100% focused on and has been. We actually did fairly, I, I felt pretty good about our enrollment numbers during COVID. We were, again, pretty strong and at an all-time high, even during COVID. And so I'm optimistic that we will certainly meet our enrollment targets for the upcoming year. I can get those at an upcoming board meeting.
Okay. And one, you say something, you know, about the paperwork. And I, I know you have guidelines. I know that. But have we received any feedback from parents as far as, you know, any barriers that's preventing them from enrolling their child in the pre-K program?
Well, that's one of the things we've been working on over the past couple of years is to change that process and make it more parent-friendly. We've put the platform online with the rest of our enroll R P S platform. And we're trying to automate a lot more and make it less paperwork-intensive. For example, by, because we've invested in having building leaders at each site, families can go to the site and register and drop off paperwork instead of, you know, historically, we'd say, you have to go over to Clark Springs at this day. You know, and so we have been making those exact changes to make it easier for families to register, although I'm sure there are continued opportunities on how to, how to streamline it even more. But I think we've made some improvements and will continue to make improvements, so it's super family-friendly.
Okay. Yes, but please remind us as a board and hold us accountable, because we want to be supportive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, thank you for the presentation. I, I do want to know just a few things. One, I, I really want to see the word phonics in there. I know we're talking about science of reading, but I, you know, just to be specific, let's say what it is. And, and I think it's important to, to be very explicit as to, you know, where, where we're headed with this in that respect. I, I, I have a question and then, or something for, that is kind of a concern for me. I guess I'll bring up the concern first, and it's related actually to the budget. I, you know, I, I understand and I appreciate the desire to, to look beyond the school day as we are looking to support our students. However, you know, this board is tasked with, with what happens during the school day. And so it does give me pause that we are looking to, to give nearly $20 million to, you know, private outside organizations that are really beyond the reach of this board. You know, we have no authority over these, over these community partnerships. And so, and so I, 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 I don't feel comfortable kind of passing along our dollars and, and some of our responsibility in, in that direction. The other, the question that I have is regarding specifically our high school students. I didn't see in the plan, you know, specifics that to me seem very, you know, guided to their specific needs. And likewise with our English, with our ESL students. You know, it's my understanding that, you know, we have students that are not performing on, on exams of any type because, because of significant reading issues. And so, and so I, I think it's critical that we look, you know, throughout the, the, the continuum in terms of grade level and how we approach this issue. And I'm, I'm eager to hear, you know, what those supports are, both for our ESL students and for our high school students across the board. Thank you.
Thank you. I can speak to the high school and middle, agreed on the, happy to emphasize the phonics piece. It's, it's very explicit in our curriculum. In terms of high school and middle school, a couple of things. While this particular presentation and investment has been really focused on early literacy, because that will prevent so many challenges down the line, we are not forgetting our, our upper grade students who have needs. So in middle and high school, there is a dedicated reading support class that students are. So in middle and high school, there is a dedicated reading support class that students are, um, we, we provide data to schools based on if they, a map assessment um, or an SOL, whatever data we have. And so this case for this year would be the end of year map, based on students who are at a certain level, um, say below in reading. Counselors know that those are students who um, we really want to see in these reading support classes, at least in um, middle school and in, and if they're still a challenge in high school, particularly in ninth and 10th grade. Um, so that's one piece. The second is, we are also offering extended day um, to our middle and high school students. And, and I think I, I mentioned extended day because we see extended day as our responsibility and, and as part of our strategy. We don't want students uh, to miss out on other electives that excite them and engage them in school by um, having them choose between reading and support and electives. But extended day allows us to do both and give them more time uh, with say, reading support. So um, students who are below a year or more, um, those are, we, we know who those students are and we will, we do targeted outreach to make sure and try to convince those uh, students and families, please, please, please sign up and come to extended day um, every day after school so that we can get you extra support. Um, those are two examples of, of how we do that, but happy to talk further um, at another time.
Excuse me. Okay. Thank you. Is anyone else, Mr. Young, regarding our literacy strategy?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Door and Ms. Jones.
Ms. Door and then Mrs. Jones. Thank you. Proceed.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I really like, I think it's the number six or whatever, the last initiative about um, getting our whole community on track. Uh, but yeah, big bet six. Um, it kind of reminds me a little bit of like the Boston Basics or PR campaigns around um, citywide. And I wonder if um, I am like the least creative person alive, so I can't think of a cool snappy name for that, but it does feel like it should be a PR piece to that. And if anyone's not familiar with Boston Basics, it was a set of things that parents um, and caregivers can do or anyone can do with children to prepare them for reading before they get into um, elementary school that is no cost or, or low cost. So I wonder if there's kind of something that we can replicate here um, and engage some of our um, nonprofit and community partners. So um, to Ms. Page's question, I would love to, I have some enthusiasm around helping that, so um, would love to, to be a thought partner there. Um, two, um, I agree that um, you know, I, I don't personally believe that our job stops um, when kids, when the bell rings. Um, I think we have to be focused on the whole child as part of our strategy. Um, and so to that end, I think that um, there's extended day and then it kind of resurrects the conversation around year-round school or extended calendar. I want to make sure that we don't have the situation that we had this year where there was not enough time for community input and feedback around a different calendar. So um, I would like to make a formal request to um, Chair Burke and Vice Chair Young to um, uh, make sure that we start that work early um, and have that as an agenda item this fall. And then finally, um, I don't know if anyone else has received a couple of emails, but um, I'm excited to talk about the stimulus money. And I know that there's funding and a, a lot of funding in that um, budget for literacy. Um, but just wanted to, I think it will be important to continue to um, kind of make the case around why we need to be allocating dollars specifically to this area versus other areas, or, you know, where we can budge on the budget, et cetera. So um, I think that kind of involving the community also means helping them understand what phonics is and why it's so important and where we are and all that good stuff. So just some thoughts.
Thank you.
Uh, Mrs. Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, thank you, Ms. uh, Dr. Epps. That was a great presentation. And I too am super excited about the initiative to improve the literacy throughout RPS. Uh, my question was, one, I noticed that we had funding for personnel and I wanted to know if um, there was going to be any um, I guess subsequent training for the teachers, because um, I know that, you know, lots of times it's not always about books. And if we already know that we're kind of going in with a deficit, you know, how do we empower our teachers to be able to not teach from a deficit base? Um, and I think that is very important, that we need to um, recognize and acknowledge what the issue is, but then also empower um, you know, teachers so that they don't get, you know, kind of discouraged when, when students aren't moving as fast as they may think they should because they're following a particular curriculum. And I know that a lot of teachers have also mentioned, you know, having to be creative. And so I just want to know like what tools would be in place for them and to be able to support them in this process because it's not going to be an easy task. Um, and then the other questions I did have was similar to Ms. Gibson's, just around um, the city of Richmond and Richmond activities and the community partners. I would like to maybe see, and you don't need to give it to us now, but just a better um, or maybe a clearer breakdown of what that entails. I think it's only fair that the families um, understand what that looks like so that it just doesn't seem like another, here's an after-school, and then you're in the after-school and you're not really getting what you should be getting. So maybe just kind of being a little clear on what that might entail, if you have a vision for it already and if it's still unfolding, you know, as you're rolling it out. I think it's only, you know, it would be great to kind of roll that out in stages so that the families can also be a part of this learning initiative. Um, because it is a lot of money and it's definitely a lot of money for great um, opportunities. And then again, just the training. Uh, I'm not sure if that's training um, on literacy initiatives for the teachers, but I, you know, I was just wondering a little bit more, what was that, what, what that would entail.
Um, thank you, Ms. Jones. Uh, to answer that question, um, first and foremost, uh, definitely want to make sure our teachers have the training and resources they need. I do not want them to feel like this is another short-term initiative, but rather we are building all of our collective knowledge base um, and accelerating it in terms of what we know works to move students forward in reading, even if that is very different from how we may have learned to teach reading. And so one of the first ways we'll do that is through, we, we started that work through our strategic plan over the last couple of years with our reading specialist cohort that we support teachers in through UVA, which will continue and expand through this program. Um, we's uh, had a cohort of teachers that got what's called letters training, which teaches teachers just, it's not a curriculum or program. It's building your knowledge base so that anything you are teaching, you have that deeper knowledge base um, in your back pocket to use um, as you need it to get creative. So your creativity is grounded in evidence-based practices. Um, so what we're doing, we, we'll, we'll continue and expand that work um, and bring this together through something called the Literacy Institute, which we will launch for the first time this August um, as voluntary for teachers uh, and school leaders. Um, so this is not just teachers, it's principals, APs, all of us central office staff, we all have to get smarter and build our collective knowledge for how to teach reading um, for all students. So the Literacy Institute, for example, um, uh, teachers get paid, it's voluntary right now, but the idea is over time. Um, and we, we offer several pathways um, for teachers to learn um, these different uh, sets of knowledge around teaching reading. And um, uh, over time, we would say if you are, for example, a pre-K through two teacher, you would have to earn a badge in that training to continue to teach um, in those grade levels because we know it's so foundational. Again, teachers will be compensated for that time. And if they can't make it this summer, that's okay. We will offer series throughout the school year. Um, and we will also continue to offer this next summer and next summer and so on. Um, but these offerings are um, not just sort of, um, you know, random PD sessions, but very evidence-based, nationally reputable um, paths of studies for teachers um, to become even stronger experts in the teaching of reading.
Madam Chair, follow-up? Thank you.
Please, yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Epps. And one last question. So will this align with the whole child concept? Because I do think that with the reading, how will teachers be able to identify that a student may not just be having a reading issue, that it could be something else, you know, that it's a learning disability or whatever? Are they also going to be able to, be able to, equipped to identify, um, you know, other issues that a student may be struggling with other than reading or literacy?
Sure. Um, so two sides of that. One, another part of our um, supporting teachers in this work and school leaders is investing and making um, data really easily accessible to teachers. Um, right now, for example, rolling up and synthesizing, say, PALS data uh, takes just a lot of like physical manpower. But there are data, there are tools that can help us accelerate so that teachers get reports where they can spend their time on analysis and planning rather than compiling data. So that's one part of it in terms of identifying other gaps, um, is providing data to help teachers pinpoint where the struggle points are. And in terms of the whole child piece, absolutely. And um, so when I think about our socio-emotional learning work and I think about some of the topics that are covered, um, there are things like um, say perseverance and how to, how do you, how do you push past frustration? And so teachers, um, students are learning that skill, say, in their counseling, with their counseling sessions, when, when they do like, say, second step. And then hopefully, you know, teachers then have that language um, to reinforce for students, you know. I know this is really frustrating right now. Let's talk about perseverance and how we persevere through frustration. So um, we certainly, uh, when we're talking with our school leaders and, and teachers, in fact, um, with our school leaders this summer, our two frames are academic success and safe and loving school cultures, so that these two combine um, to support the whole child. Um, and then in terms of specifics, we have a pretty robust um, child study process. It's called um, the ESBIT or the School-Based Interventions Team. And if a teacher is concerned that there's something else going on, that's when they bring um, that data to that team to help. Um, you'll have social workers and others that can help maybe unpack what's going on be- beyond, say, a reading challenge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones and Dr. Epp. Uh, Mr. Young, is anyone else?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Rizzi, then Dr. Harris Mohammed.
All right, Ms. Rizzi, floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I got my time warning. Thank you, Attorney Lilly. Wherever you are there. Um, so really quickly, um, I'd like to, not tonight necessarily, but maybe we could learn more about what happens above the third grade level. Like some teachers have been telling me that phonics, you know, teaching gets dropped after third grade. I don't know. I mean, that may or may not be true, but that's what I've heard. Um, so I'd like more information about that at some point. Um, I think um, Ms. Jones asked a really good question about like, you know, diagnosing students who are not necessarily struggling with reading, but there may be other things going around, going on. Um, for example, you know, brain processing, um, working memory issues, dyslexia, dysgraphia, those things require specialized um, you know, assistance. Um, and so, you know, we want our teachers to be able to like, actually really be able to tell when there's something else going on. This has just, you know, phonics and reading. But um, thank you. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Dr. Epp, I have two questions. Is there a phonics program in grades above third grade? And if so, how are they being implemented? And the second question is, can you educate the board on the reading to learn and loving to read after the second grade?
Yes, ma'am. Um, thank you. So um, on the phonics piece, um, by, by the end of second grade, uh, actually before, really by the end of first grade, students should be um, you know, phonics is the ability to sound out, make sounds and, and break apart sounds to make words, right? That's the simplest way we, we call it decoding. Um, that's a very short simplification, oversimplification. And uh, standards-wise, students really should be done with that, really by first grade, such that by second grade, they are moving into what we call blending. So taking sounds, you know, chunks of sounds and putting those together to make words and then beginning to really read, read for comprehension. Um, so K1 really is that learning to read. Um, and as you start to move, kind of middle of second grade into third, you're starting to read more fluently. Um, even if they're simple sentences or simple texts, you're reading um, fluently. You're not having to stop and sound out everything. Um, and you're able to read so that you can begin to comprehend. And we call that transition, which Dr. Harris Mohammed's referring to, is that transition from learning to read to reading to learn. And third grade is really when reading becomes about um, comprehension. And if a student struggles to decode, i.e. if they haven't kind of mastered phonics, they, uh, what can happen is you spend so much time trying to sound out words that it's, takes so long to get through a sentence and then frustration sets in, or you've done so much sounding out, you forgot what you read. Okay? Um, so that's kind of the transition from learning to read to read to learn. In terms of phonics above third grade, that is not part of our formal curriculum. It is in K2. Um, but once you get to third grade, that is not part of the standards. However, there are students who may need that and they may have gaps. And so students who have that particular gap, um, every student um, in the coming year is placed in a leveled, in addition to their regular reading instruction um, or ELA instruction, they are in a leveled small group during the day for 45 minutes. And so a third grader who is still struggling to decode would receive a tier, we would consider that a tier three intervention um, because it is so serious at that age. So a student, a, a third grader might be, say, in, they might receive what we call Wilson. So our, our curriculum or our program that we use for older, older elementary students who struggle with decoding or phonics, they would receive um, tier three, and that is typically Wilson training. Um, a couple of our schools use Orton-Gillingham, but generally it's Wilson. But that is not for every third grader. It is only for the third graders who have that particular struggle point.
Follow-up question, Madam Chair.
Sure, go right ahead.
So what do we do with those third graders who do not struggle? What's the instructional plan for them? Because you just stated that's not for everybody. So how do we equitably move the student academically?
Absolutely.
From that section, loving to, learning to read, loving to read, reading for comprehension?
Yes. So um, during each grade level has a dedicated personalized reading block where they are broken up into small groups based on their particular need. So say tier three would be the smallest groups, and, and those students would be with the interventionists and our strongest reading teachers, and that would be a group of no more than five. Whereas students with tier two, they might receive um, something, let's call it, uh, we, we use SIPs or Hagerty, um, are two of our other intervention programs based on what the particular need is. Um, that might be a group of, you know, say, seven or eight students. Students who are reading generally on level and are kind of just progressing but need more time just in text, they would be part of, say, a group size of eight to 10, and they would be doing a book club style time during that time with a book that is high interest on grade level, and it's just more time, um, and they will be digging into discussing texts. So during that personalized learning time, um, you might hear called an intervention block. Um, but it's really personalized because your students who are doing okay, they're still going to get more time to read, but it's going to be, look more like a book club. Whereas your tier two students, students who need tier two supports um, will get that, and students who need tier three supports will receive that during that time.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Is there anyone else? Mr. Young?
No. No, ma'am.
Dr. Epp, again, thank you so very much. Until we master this objective with literacy, we will continue to struggle. But I love what you shared and appreciate, especially with the child study, opportunity to address each child's needs as we move forward with the teaching, learning process and giving all of our teachers and support staff the, the skills and materials that they need to move forward. So thank you so very much for that report and we look forward to hearing updates.
Thank you.
Thank you. 4.03 Superintendent's Recommended Spin Plan for the ARP Federal Stimulus Funds. Mr. Camus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I don't know about you, but I get excited talking about literacy because it is really the um, the crux of, of why we're all here. And um, it's not just about uh, phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency. It's really about unlocking all of life's opportunities. So I am super So I am super excited to dig into this. I'm incredibly grateful that we have this once in a lifetime infusion of resources to be able to make this come alive. And as folks will recall, this is actually Action 1.2 in our strategic plan. It says, create a do-whatever-it-takes literacy plan to ensure all kids are reading on grade level by third grade. And just imagine for a second how things change once we achieve that goal and what that means for fourth grade, fifth grade, and so on, and for a whole generation of our students. So I am super excited. And I am going to now be brief because of the hour, since I think our government's manual says we're supposed to stop at 10. The stimulus funding, I'm going to be, I'll do this quickly. It's about $123 million from the Biden stimulus package. And really, we're proposing two uses. $58 million to maintain our earlier investments, things like the health and safety investments, things of that nature that we are in the midst of making. And then the balance, $65 million over three years for personnel, training, resources, extended day, and so on, that Dr. Epp just described for this ambitious, once-in-a-lifetime literacy initiative. The next slide is just laid out by category personnel, training, resources, the books, the libraries, all these sorts of things. And then some of the partnerships as well. So glad to take any questions, but that really is the long and short of it. Maintain our earlier investments, particularly around health and safety, capital work, our virtual academy. And then the second bucket is our ambitious, life-changing literacy plan.
Thank you so very much. Are there any questions of our superintendent at this time? Mr. Young?
Madam Chair, I'm sure there will be, but in the interim, I just registered in chat, a brief comment, so if I may, just want to let the cat out of the bag and affirm what I spoke to a moment ago. I look forward to supporting, supporting this proposal, though we're not voting on it this evening. I do look forward at our next meeting prayerfully, adopting, adopting this plan and allocating the resources for what constitutes mission-critical work. Thank you, Madam Chair. Do not see anyone as of yet, Madam Chair.
All right. If not, we'll move on to board action items. And Ms. Lilly, I need to know clarification on timing.
As far as timing for, I've just been timing each item. I have not had a running time. I didn't know there was a running time for all of it, but I have been timing each item.
You've done everything beautifully. Thank you so very much. You, you have been the attorney that reads for us, keeps time for us, all of that. And then, I mean, we thank you for going beyond what's in place. Ms. Jones, would you please address the 10:00 PM and the governance? Can't hear you.
Yes, that was part of the governance manual that we said we would come back as the committee and revisit because there were some points in there and we received feedback from Ms. Gibson that we were going to discuss. But we did agree that we would try to kind of stay on task as.
All right. Trying to stay on, tell me what to do. Trying to stay on, on task?
Yeah.
Did we approve it? What, what, what was the consensus?
So the manual has been approved. We definitely all, we, it has been approved. We all agree that it is a living document. Part of the concern and part of the feedback was about the ending at 10:00 PM. We agreed that we would follow city council. And so I will defer to the committee on this one because we did say 10 o'clock. So committee, please speak now. If ever holds your peace.
We would have to really go for the whole board to either address it as it is. However, I know there's some items that we need to, the personnel actions and the, the board action items, we, we need to address those. So in order for us to move forward, I would prefer, because it's in a governance manual, Ms. Lilly, help me with this, that we have a, we, a motion to amend the, to move forward in order to address the board action items. Is that the correct procedure?
Well, the agenda was amended, excuse me, the agenda was, tonight's agenda was adopted as it was, as it was amended, and we made those changes. So these items still remain on the agenda for tonight. And just as you've done in other meetings, if the board wishes to defer any of these items, those that need to take place tonight, of course, I know this is your only meeting in July. But those that need to take place tonight, you know, the board, you can get consensus of the board whether to move forward at this point in time in the agenda, modify the agenda, or in the meeting at this time per the governance manual.
What's your pleasure, board members? We should be able to go through the next set in less than 15, 30 minutes, depending upon discussion, which Ms. Lilly, thank you so much.
So, question.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry.
No, no, ma'am, Mr. Jones, please. I just wanted to acknowledge that the superintendent, along with Ms. Page, did request opportunity to address the board, but.
That's fine. That's, that's fine.
All right. So who's first, Mr. Young?
Ms. Page.
Ms. Page, the floor is yours.
So thank you. I just had a question. I was fumbling with my laptop. I couldn't, and I didn't ask the question at the appropriate time. But regarding the stimulus money, are there any reporting guidelines, Superintendent Camus?
There's all kinds of guidelines related to that. So we'll, we'll make sure obviously to, to meet all the federal requirements. While I have the floor, if I may, if we could just keep going, I think we can get through personnel actions and world languages real quick. So those are critical. So if, if, if there's consensus, I'd love to just keep moving, but we can, we can do it fast.
Is it consensus to move forward, colleagues? Yes or no?
Yes. And I was just going to say, we could just keep our comments to a minimum so that we can move through since we're not stopping at 10, and then we'll practice the 10 for the next meeting.
All right. And the general vicinity of 10 is really great.
All right. Five, number five, board action items, number 5.01, receive for action personnel actions, Ms. Lee.
I'll be speaking for Ms. Lee this evening.
Okay, thank you.
She was not feeling well. So this evening, we bring forth the nomination of 40 employees, the change of contract of 24 employees, the resignation of 23 employees, the furlough of two employees, the retirement of five employees, the rescission of resignation of two employees, the termination of one employee, and the name change of one employee. And I'm happy to take any questions or consider closed as needed.
Thank you, Ms. Hadasco. You've been very quiet tonight. It's good to hear your voice. I know you're coming up later as well. Any comments or questions, Mr. Young?
Ms. White, then Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Ms. White?
Thank you, Madam President. If you can hear me, Ms. Hadasco, I do have a question, but it's closed.
Okay, happy to address.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes, ma'am. The same. Thank you.
All right. That means we will go into close for 5.01. 5.02, before we can make a vote and we come back out close, you understand it. 5.02, receive for action contracts over $250,000 for world languages. Dr.?
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to, to bring to the board, over, over time, one, one area that has not had much attention dedicated to it has been our world languages work. Specifically, you might think of these as, we used to call them foreign language, but this is French, Spanish, German, et cetera. And we offer world languages, actually in elementary school as well as middle and high school. But we have as a division not ever formally adopted instructional resources or aka textbooks for world languages at the secondary level. So we are bringing to this board for approval a world language textbook slash instructional resource for approval to, for our six through 12 world language teachers. Like other curricula or textbook selection, we have followed our standard process that both aligns to our board policy as well as the VDOE policy. This, we've outlined the specific content that we were looking for in the RFP. This is based on input directly from world language teachers. World language teachers sat on the evaluation committee. You can see how we assigned the weight of each area in the RFP. And as a result, the evaluation committee comprised of educators has recommended this particular instructional resource for approval and for adoption. And upon your approval, we will proceed with ordering resources to align with numbers based on middle and high school schedules for the 21, 22 school year.
Thank you, Dr. Epp. Are there any questions, Mr. Young?
No, ma'am.
If there are any questions, can we get, this is a board action item. Can we get a motion to move this?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. Ms. White just registered a comment.
All right, Ms. White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have one question, Dr. Epp. How many languages is this world language? How many?
Thank you, Ms. White. Well, first, we would certainly provide this for any course that a school is offering. Generally, we are looking at the primary three, which is Spanish, French, and German. Now, some of our students do take, we offer Chinese or other languages that students may take virtually or through Virtual Virginia. And so if that, if they do that, usually those courses have their own assigned materials. But if they didn't, we would use this publisher to provide resources for any additional smaller or less, less common world languages that students take. But it's the big three right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, Mr. Young?
No, ma'am.
Okay, colleagues, can we get a motion, please, to accept this report by Dr. Epp regarding our world languages?
Madam Chair, so moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Young to accept the report on $250,000K for world languages. Is there a second?
I can't.
Mr. Young moved, Mrs. Page seconded. Are you ready for the, is there a question? All right, we're ready to vote. Madam Clerk?
District one, Elizabeth Dorr.
Yes.
District two, Mariah White.
Yes.
District three, Kenya Gibson. Ms. Gibson?
Abstain.
District four, Jonathan Young.
Aye.
District five, Stephanie Rizzi.
Yes.
District six, Dr. Shonda Harris Mohammed.
Yes.
District seven, Cheryl Burke.
Yes.
District eight, Dawn Page.
Yes.
District nine, Nicole Jones.
Yes.
Madam Chair, the motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Epp. 5.03, receive for second read and action revisions to Policy 1-6.7 Public Participation. Ms. Lilly, would you go over that for us, please?
Sure. The second read of the public participation policy. Updates were made to this particular policy to clarify some of the practices or the, the previous practices with respect to the receipt of public comments. There were some changes made to the wording. References to citizens were, citizen was changed to community members. And this was, again, revisions in an effort to clarify some of the processes. And this appears to be similar to the first redraft.
And it reads now, as everyone has had a chance to look at that. Is there any discussion regarding the new public participation policy as written?
No, ma'am.
All right. Are you ready to vote? Excuse me. Are you ready for a motion? Can we get a motion to receive that report policy? Yes or no? All right. Are there any questions regarding this public participation policy?
I motion that we approve the Policy 1-6.7 Public Participation at Meetings.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Dorr and seconded by Ms. Jones to receive the actions and revisions for Policy 1-6.7 Public Participation. Question? Let's vote. Madam Clerk?
District one, Elizabeth Dorr.
Yes.
District two, Mariah White.
Yes.
District three, Kenya Gibson.
Yes.
District four, Jonathan Young.
Aye.
District five, Stephanie Rizzi.
Yes.
District six, Dr. Shonda Harris Mohammed.
Yes.
District seven, Cheryl Burke.
Yes.
District eight, Dawn Page.
Yes.
District nine, Nicole Jones.
Yes.
Madam Chair, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so very much. So now can we move forward to 5.04, receive for second read and action revisions to Policy 1-5.1 School Board Committees? I'm trying to pull that one up again to look at that because that had a lot of revisions. Did everyone, everybody get a chance to review that? It's something that I did not, okay, I guess it has to be later. On that, we have a lot of items in red. We have the Standing Committees of the School Board, Disciplinary Committee, Finance and Audit Committee, Policy Committee, and School Board Ad-Hoc Committee. Was there anything in particular, Ms. Lilly, that we, I think we pretty much updated it. That's why you have this in red. Was there anything else we needed to address with this?
No, I think that the changes are, you know, certainly if, if moving forward, we need to develop more of the more procedural language in each of the, in each of the committees that are here. We can certainly do that, but I think the general push at this point was to make sure that the Finance and Audit Committee was, well, the Finance Committee was expanded to include the Audit Committee and that there was a Policy Committee that was added to the Standing Committee list. And so anything, any other changes from that at this point, you know, we can certainly add as procedural language moving forward. But if this is approved tonight, the Policy Committee will be added and the Finance Committee will be expanded to include the Audit Committee.
All right. Thank you for your work with this. Are there any suggestions, corrections, conversations, input? If not, can we get a motion to approve or not approve?
Madam Chair, Ms. Page has a question.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
Yes, so my question, I was on, I thought we weren't adding the Policy Committee because I guess I'm trying to get an understanding how Ms. Attorney Lilly, the work that she does with policy review. And we know the policies are driven by the state code, so I guess I'm. And we know the policies are driven by the state code, so I guess I'm.
If, if I may.
Yes, please.
If you, you may recall, and I, I can't, we've had, the board has had a policy committee before in the past. And part of that is they do the advanced work, working with the administration. And they said, you know, we set a schedule, we, we, in the past, we would have gone over the policies from like beginning to the end, right? We take a section, we just go from beginning to end, which the committee were lends itself better for that than a full board meeting per se. So once the, once the recommendations, that committee will review the drafts. They will pull in anybody that they need to pull in to, to inform the draft revisions. Because yes, while some of your policies, most of them are based in the law, right? And so there are some, some, you know, guardrails that we cannot change. Some of your policies are not, right? And so the law does give the board the ability to establish policies that may not, you know, be prescribed by law. So if, for example, and I'll just use this, if, for example, and this is just an example, you know, you all want to say everybody wear red shirts on the first day of school as a policy, right? So that is not anywhere in the law, but you all can look at whether or not a policy such as that, and I know it's, you know, uh, example would be applicable for something that you guys need to do as a division. So the policy committee would just simply do that. You guys are supposed to be reviewing your pol, the board is supposed to be reviewing the policy every five years routinely. And in between that, we do some changes, but you all are due for a a very detailed review of your policies, which your committee could be helpful for. Because once they do their work, then you all will get the result of that as a draft and know that it's embedded through the administration, through that committee, and that's the recommendation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Gibbs, Mr., excuse me, Mr. Young?
We have Dr. Harris Mohammed and Madam Chair, I see that you registered a comment.
Thank you. Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. The policy committee will be formed as an extension of the work that we already do. Not to reiterate Ms. Lilly's statement, but there are policies that are being used in our buildings. One, we discussed earlier about one of the things that was listed in the letter from, I believe, the Office of School Quality or from the State Superintendent. So there is a need for our policy committee. As I've stated before, Ms. Page, when you and I talked, one of my concerns was from building to building, the policies were not the same, which drives everything in the school division. So I, I just wanted to state that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Young, am I next?
Yes, ma'am, you are.
Thank you. Um, I have one question, Ms. Lilly, regarding this, and I knew it was something on this. Under the policy committee, where it lists the school board may appoint additional individuals to the committee who represent the views of various community stakeholders in the development of policies affecting the school division. Can you please clarify that? Why would we bring in? If it's.
Well, the, um, when we were, when this was open for feedback originally, between the first read and now, I think we skipped last, the last meeting as well. But anyway, when it was open for feedback, some of the feedback included putting people on the committee, appointing specific categories of people on the committee. And in order to bridge the actual naming of those folks, because I think that we, there's still some work that we need to do on whether you rename these people in this particular categories or not. We need to, I put that language there to leave it open for the board to down the road if they see fit to name folk or, or open it up to community stakeholders to participate directly on the committee. I will say that, you know, just as we do with the other policies, public, the public will be aware of the policy changes and revisions and can offer comment at any time. But this was a, an effort to acknowledge the feedback that I got to that there was a desire to potentially look at adding some other individuals to the committee. And so that's something that we still need to nail down and talk about, but I wanted to leave it open for that possibility since it's going to be voted on today.
Thank you so much. Any other discussion? Can we get a motion to move forward? When will we have a? You have five minutes.
I see Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Dr. Harris Mohammed, the floor is yours.
Yes, ma'am, I would like to make a motion that we accept as a school board, the committees that have been presented to us.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Dr. Harris Mohammed and seconded by Ms. Jones to accept the revised committee report, policy one dash five dot one. Are you ready to vote? Question? Madam Clerk?
Hi, Elizabeth Door, District one.
Yes.
District two, Mariah White.
Yes.
District three, Kenya Gibson.
Yes.
District four, Jonathan Young.
Aye.
District five, Stephanie Rizzi.
Yes.
District six, Dr. Shonda Harris Mohammed.
Yes.
District seven, Cheryl Burke.
Yes.
District eight, Dawn Paige.
Yes.
District nine, Nicole Jones.
Yes.
Madam Chair, the, the motion unanimously passes.
Thank you so very much. Last item for tonight is five point zero five, review for action board travel and district activity requests. I know there are two. Madam Clerk, would you be so kind?
All right, um, Madam Chair, I only have one. I have one from, um, from our board chair and the amount of five hundred dollars for, um, East End Renaissance Council.
All right, thank you so much. There was also one from Mrs. Page that was sent in today. You may not have had time to see that email. Ms. Page, you just submit your paperwork. I saw something from you. I can't hear you, dear.
Yes, I submitted it to both you and Ms. Clerk.
Can you state what it was and the amount?
Sure. Let me pull it up.
It was the going back to school, it was.
Pre-back-to-school rally and National Night Out.
Right.
To support school supplies for students in the outside and the dates are.
What's the, what's the amount, Ms. Page?
Six hundred dollars.
All right.
One date is August.
We can share that with Ms. Page. We can share that with everyone.
One date, I have it.
Okay.
Okay.
One date is August third, that's National Night Out. And then it's August eighth, that's the pre-back-to-school rally. So five hundred for National Night Out and one hundred for the pre-back-to-school event.
All right, so we have two before us, colleagues. One for the East End program that's been ongoing all summer for our students who are in the East End. And the name of the program, Ms. Clerk, was a long write-up. And maybe moving forward, I'm going to recommend that we put this in board docs so it can be attached, Ms. Lilly, so everybody can see also what we're doing. And that would be a good, um, place to move forward. So there's five hundred for.
Five hundred is for the Eastern Renaissance Council.
Eastern Renaissance Council, which is an ongoing program for the entire summer through Armstrong Faculty for students in the East End. And I'll, I'll make sure it's an excellent program and misses, so we have two, three on the table. Five hundred for Cheryl Burke, seventh district, seven, sixth and seventh district, real students. And, um, Ms. Page for the eighth, but six hundred. Can we get a motion to approve those two requests? Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes, ma'am, I move that we accept the district activity request as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Dr. Harris Mohammed and seconded by Mrs. Page that we move forward with approving these two requests. Any questions? Are we ready to vote? Madam Clerk?
Okay. District one, Elizabeth Door.
Yes.
District two, Mariah White.
Yes.
District three, Kenya Gibson.
Yes.
District four, Jonathan Young.
Abstain.
District five, Stephanie Rizzi.
Yes.
District six, Dr. Shandra Harris Mohammed.
Yes.
District seven, Cheryl Burke.
Yes.
District eight, Dawn Paige.
Yes.
District nine, Nicole Jones.
Yes.
The motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you so very much. Um, we've already done number six here, consent agenda, we don't have anything. Number eight, for your reading pleasure, moving on, the budget transfers, any questions regarding that? The J C T report. Um, new business under number nine, excuse me. Received reports from board members attending committee meetings and conferences. I didn't receive any this time. So I know some are coming. Number nine, new business. I do have a, a comment here that I'd like to put before the team for our next agenda, but just to think about it, for the governance committee. As you know, colleagues, it was on the agenda earlier, but we haven't talked about it due to shuffling of meeting times. Need to plan our retreat. And I would like you all to think on the, consider the governance, the governance committee being responsible for, um, planning our retreat. I, I, I'm not going to put it forth as a motion because I haven't really talked to them about, about it at length. But if you have any input or want to be a part of that, I'm asking that committee, since it's in place, and of course, we want to do some fun things. Team building, mindfulness training, understanding our roles better, the whole nine yards. We, we, it's time for a retreat. So, um, Ms. Jones, you don't look too happy about that right now, so would you, at some point, find out for your committee if they'd be interested, since that committee is in place, they've done an excellent job with putting that manual together and we do, I need to learn it, I need to study it. But, um, a retreat is an opportunity to rejuvenate ourselves and to come back forward, hopefully in the beginning of the school year. And I know our next meeting is on August the second. So we'll make, August the second, I believe, is that correct? Because this is our only meeting for this month, whatever the first Monday is in August. So I'm asked, that will be on the agenda for that next meeting. And if anyone else wants to be a part of that, I'm just putting that out there as a suggestion. So whatever feedback or whatever else of Ms. Jones and those committee members, since they're already, they know what the guidelines are, they've studied it, they've put it together. I would love for them to, um, but anybody else that wants to be a part of that are suggestions as well. Are there any questions regarding that? Mr. Young, anyone has any questions? That's a suggestion. We, but, but we are going to have a retreat.
I do see, Dr. Harris Mohammed, uh, are you registering a question relevant to this subject?
I had a comment for announcements, I think we.
Yeah. And I, and I'll follow up with the committee because I was planning on reaching out anyway because we have to circle back for, um, some feedback and some things we need to work on the document anyway, so we can discuss it. I'll send something out tomorrow, set up a meeting.
If anyone else want, if the committee is in agreement or anyone else that wants to be on that committee, I'm suggesting this at this time, but it will be on the agenda for the next meeting. Any other new business?
And Madam Chair, do you see Ms. White?
Ms. White?
I don't know, I didn't put my name in there, but go ahead. No, I don't have anything.
Any other new business, Mr. Young?
Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Dr. Harris Mohammed, the floor is yours.
Yes, ma'am, I just wanted to share with my school board colleagues that I have been invited to participate in a focus group with the National School Board Association. If you remember, you all approved me to attend that week's conference back in April. We were on spring break when I attended. And so they were reaching out to different school board members in the country to participate in a focus group that directly, that directly focuses on how to create environments where all students, regardless of their zip code, what they look like, can thrive. So I'm excited about that. It's July the twenty seventh. And I will, um, after the focus group is done, I will upload, if there is a link, uh, upload that link in board docs and a PowerPoint slide and, or A D F, excuse me, Adobe PDF. Or if there is not a link to that focus group, I will provide a summary, but I'll make sure I, I will do that within the week. Thank you.
Thank you for serving. Thank you so very much. Are there any announcements?
Madam Chair, I see Ms. White now.
Ms. White?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, what I just wanted to tell everyone is tomorrow is the thirty-fifth annual V S B A conference. Which I'll be attending tomorrow. And, uh, the first speaker will be the governor and it's a list of other, um, individuals.
Thank you so much, and we know you will bring lots of good information back. Any other announcements? Colleagues, please be mindful of the Saturday Fest, this Saturday at M L King from three, what time is it, Dr. Harris?
It's eleven to three.
Eleven to three, okay, I was coming at the end, at three o'clock, eleven to three at M L King. Please come and, um, what else was announced for this coming week? That was it. Is there any other business? If not, we will go into close. Please, who has the motion to go and close, Mrs. Page?
Yes.
Have the motion, would you read that, please?
Yes. Pursuant to sections two point two dash three seven one one, A one of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended, I move that the school board of the city of Richmond convene in closed session to consider their assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation or Pacific Public Officers, appointees or employees of the school board of school and school division or for the discussion, consideration or interview of prospective candidates to discuss, discuss employment matters as detailed in the Personnel Action Report of this date and to discuss the performance of Pacific Board employees.
All right, um, she's made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Page and seconded by Mr. Young for us to go into close. Madam Clerk, we're ready for the vote. If there are any questions or discussion.
All right, District one, Elizabeth Door.
Yes.
District two, Mariah White.
Yes.
District three, Kenya Gibson.
Yes.
District four, Jonathan Young.
Aye.
District five, Stephanie Rizzi.
Yes.
District six, Shonda Mohammed.
Yes.
District seven, Cheryl Burke.
Yes.
District eight, Dawn Paige.
Yes.
District nine, Nicole Jones.
Yes.
Madam Chair, the motion unanimously passes.
Thank you very much. We will, for those that are viewing, we are going into close. We will be back. Sebastian, remember, please, to keep us on. I see your name still there. Don't close us out completely, but we did get the, um, link to go into close, so I will see you all there. Thank you. See you in a minute. See you in a minute. Thank you all so much. We are now back. Live streaming is, streaming is in place live, and we're ready to receive a motion from Mrs. Nicole Jones.
I move that the Richmond School Board direct its clerk to call for a roll call vote of the board's members that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed set, the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Richmond, Richmond School Board.
Ms. Lilly, um, Ms. Clark can't get back on?
I will, um, is there a second? Uh, we can carry this out. I'll, I'll make the, I'll make the note.
All right, all right, Ms. It's been moved by Ms. Mrs. Jones to reconvene and seconded by Mrs. Door?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions? Are we ready to vote? Madam Lilly?
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Ms. White?
No.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Ms. Hic, uh, excuse me, Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes eight one. You're now in open.
All right, thank you so very much. We now need to move forward with, oh, I don't have the action in front of me. It is, one moment, where's my agenda? One moment, please. We're now ready to move forward on five point zero one, receive for action personnel actions.
Madam Chair, I move that we received uh, the personnel actions as amended with the addendum.
Is there a second?
Second.
Vote, it's been moved by Ms. Door and seconded by Ms. Page to receive the action with the addendum. Are you ready to vote? Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Are we not separating them out, her most?
Yes.
My motion.
The first motion is to receive it with the, you wanna explain this door?
I'm sorry, I got it.
Okay.
With the addendum.
Yes.
It's, the next one will, they will break it down. As amended with the addendum. The amendments are going to be, um, the second motion will be the one that we discussed in close, and the third motion will be the one that we discussed in close. So the first is to approve absent the other two that we removed, the other two motions that we removed, and then we'll go to two and three.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right, any more questions, discussion? If not, we're ready to vote, Ms. Lilly.
This, excuse me, Ms. Door?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero.
All right. Now the next motion.
Chair Burke, I motion to approve personnel report number two.
Is there a second? Moved by Ms. Door, seconded by Ms. Page to approve the second item on that um, agenda. Any questions? All right, no questions. We're ready to vote, Ms. Lilly.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Ms. White?
No.
Ms. Gibson?
No.
Mr. Young? I'm sorry, Mr. Young, I didn't.
Abstain.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Doc, uh, Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes six two.
Chair Burke, I motion to approve personnel report number three.
Is there a second?
Again.
All right, it has been moved and properly seconded to receive action item number three. Any questions? If not, we're ready to vote. Ms. Lilly?
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Ms. White?
No.
Ms. Gibson?
No.
Mr. Young?
No.
Ms. Rizzi?
No.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
No.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion fails five four.
Right? Is there anything else, colleagues? Please take care of yourselves. We'll see you in August. This meeting is now adjourned.
Have a good night.
Have a good night, everybody. Be safe, be safe. Good night. Get some rest.